You got me again? All right. All right, welcome, everybody. I am going to go ahead. Well, first of all, we were all present and confirming through Diana or Shannon if we have any reporting report from closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no items to report from closed session.
All right. And we are all here. Let me read the information regarding virtual council meetings. The governor has declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. The governor also issued an executive order N 3320, which directs California to follow public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. The executive order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are a top priority for the city of Yuba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health safety precautions. How to participate in this virtual meeting? This meeting is utilizing the GoToWebinar application for this live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the questions functionality of this tool in order to accommodate public comment. On desktop computers, the questions section of the app is located at the bottom of the GoToWebinar panel. That is on the right side of your screen. On mobile devices, there is a question mark on the bottom toolbar that opens the questions screen. For those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the questions portion of the app and be sure to state that the item, be sure to state the item you will be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public to, for all to hear for that specific item. Please be timely with your questions, as once the public hearing is closed or the item has been discussed by council and voted on, no more comments will be accepted for that item. And may I have roll call, please?
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Cardoza.
Here.
Councilmember Espandola.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
All right. Well, if everyone would please stand for invocation and inspiration, and then followed by the pledge. And Spencer, if I may ask you to lead the pledge once we're done. Thank you.
All right, let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day that we have to, to come before you and come before the residents of this city and, and do what is in their best interest, Lord. We just pray that you will give us wisdom to do the right things, to make the right decisions. And in times like this, Father, I'm brought back to the stories of, of you being on the, the ship with the disciples and the seas were rough. And we just ask that those words that you said way back then be said again amongst this entire nation, and that is peace be still. We are one nation, not many races, just one nation, one people. And Father, we just want to give you the glory and honor, and we want that peace to be still, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We have any agenda modifications at all? Nothing? All right. Item number one here is a, is a very positive thing, which I'm happy to be a part of, is a ceremony presentation for William Fuller, his retirement proclamation. And it's going to be interesting because I had never done it with social distancing stuff in place. So I think maybe we're also going to have, provide the opportunity to, to former Fire Chief Mark Boomgarden, your Vice Mayor, to present this, since those folks go so way back and they have that camaraderie with the fire department. So he will be presenting the proclamation. And I think, what do you think? We, we will stand up, or, and then you guys can all come, just social distance, please. Come on down. I, I know you, I fully understand you would love to have your wife here. So, you know, we have 666, and I'll stand back. You're good? Well, you do whatever, you just feel free, please. This is a big, big deal.
This is my first one. There you go. I usually hand it to the first. There you go. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to present this to, to Bill Fuller. Our history does go back quite a ways. I mentioned yesterday, I think you started in 78. My time with the city started in 79, so I guess that makes us pretty close in age, huh? Yeah. Okay. So, I know that this is how Sean does this, too. No, it's okay. Please, please welcome Assistant Fire Chief of Administration William Fuller. William Fuller is retiring from the Yuba City Fire Department effective June 1st, 2020, with over 42 years of service to the city of Yuba City. Bill began his 42-year tenure with the city of Yuba City on February 27, 1978. He has held the following positions: Administrative Assistant to the City Administrator and the Public Works Director, Assistant to the City Manager, Parks Coordinator, Parks and Recreation Administrator, Fire Administrative Analyst III, and had completed his career as an Assistant Fire Chief of Administration. Bill served as a founding member of the Yuba City's Sister City Program with Fujishiro Toride, Japan, formed and incorporated the Friends of the Yuba City Parks and Recreation Foundation, and secured Yuba City's Trees City USA status. During his 18-year tenure with the Yuba City Fire Department, wow, 18 years, with the Yuba City Fire Department, he was successful in securing over $6 million in fire-related grant funding. He had, was instrumental in our reception of four staffing for adequate fire and emergency response SAFER grants. This has allowed us to put additional firefighters on the fire engines in support of protecting our citizens. Worked with the California Office of Emergency Services in procuring a hazardous materials response vehicle at no cost to the city of Yuba City, along with obtaining over $500,000 in hazardous materials training funds. Bill contributed to the growth of the fire department by serving on various committees and participated in every aspect of the fire department's emergency management planning. In 2009, he received the Gold Award from the California Emergency Services Association for outstanding efforts in emergency management and disaster mitigation for the Be Prepared Yuba City Household Emergency Preparedness booklet. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Sean Harris, and Mark Boomgarden, and Grace Espandola, and David Shaw, and Manny Cardoza of the city of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, which I just named, do hereby honor and commend William Fuller for his 42 years of faithful service to the city of Yuba City, the Yuba City Fire Department, and to the people of Yuba City and Sutter County, and wish him much success and happiness in his retirement. Thank you. I'm going to take, I'm going to take one, one moment. You know, when you work for any agency in the city, but I'm going to speak specifically to the fire department, you spend a lot of time away from your family. And so to Bill's wife Karen and the family, thank you for sharing him with us over the 42 years. I know support comes from the family at home, but I would also like to turn this over to Bill now for a few words, but thank you.
Thank you very much. I guess at 40, 42 years, you begin to, you kind of know who's who, and it's kind of funny. Mark was the city's first employee of the year, and I wrote a little story, a bio for the newsletter for, of him. And then there was this young lady who got a job as an engineering aide, who, she's now the city manager. It's just, it's been very fun growing up here, literally growing up, and having a family and starting a family here with my wife. And it's just been great working with everybody. And I appreciate all the kind words and very humbling, but I really appreciate the career I've had here at Yuba City. So thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
In addition to some of the items that we've covered?
Mr. Fuller, we've only had the opportunity to work together for a short time, but it's been an absolute pleasure. I, yesterday, we tried to display some of that appreciation towards you. And again, on behalf of the city, we'd like to provide this in addition to the items yesterday. So thank you for all your assistance.
Very much, thank you.
We have one more presentation from Councilman Shaw.
Actually, this is from the entire council, but you have to start off retirement right. And a little birdie told us you kind of liked bubbly and sweet. So take this, start off your retirement in the right direction, and best of luck to you.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, we'll do it this way.
There we go. Thank you. Thank you. Six months?
Yep. Right behind, there you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for everything. He does a good job. It's the second time I've heard him talk in a retirement occasion. He does such a good job not getting choked up. I can't, I get choked up listening to him. It's, it's, that's a very big deal, 42 years of, of service. And Chief Boomgarden said it very well, that it's, it's a family thing, and family takes a big sacrifice, too. So I'm happy to see his family there joining him. Okay. COVID-19, a discussion and action measures to mitigate the impacts.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a brief presentation on COVID-19 impacts. So in terms of city operations, as of yesterday, we've opened City Hall from Monday through Friday from 8 to 5. Animal services expanded their hours. They're now open Tuesday through Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Also, as of yesterday, the police department lobby opened with restrictions, but Monday through Friday, 8 a.m. to 5 p.m., no more than three members of the public allowed in the lobby at one time, and fingerprinting is by appointment only. All other facilities continue to remain closed to the public. And at this point, I would like to ask that Community Services Director Brad McIntyre come up to provide you an update related to parks.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I actually have some good news this evening as it relates to our parks. Per the, our health officer, our Bay County Health Officer, Dr. Lou Splashpads are available to open. And so if it is at the discretion of council, we would like to proceed with that, again, under Dr. Lou's orders, with her okay. And those splash pads are at Regency Park, north of town, and Shanghai Park, which is south of town. I'd gladly entertain any questions.
Any questions? Yeah, we've discussed it, you know, off and on before, and I think it's, it's time. I think we all concur that go ahead and move forward on that. Some good news.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brad. What else have you? COVID-related, sir?
Do you want to address the parks from these letters, or is that coming up?
It's on, it's on number three, but we, yeah, but I believe it was two letters?
Yeah, I'll be reading them and just.
When we get to, yeah, when we get to number three, some folks were asking about that.
When you're ready for a public comment.
I think we just answered their question.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment regarding number two?
No, none.
Okay. And we have two for number three. Let's just go to that for public communication.
All right, we have two. Good afternoon. I'm submitting my question for the city council meeting this evening. I would like to know why our park equipment has, hasn't been open for our children. Our surrounding cities have opened, and they have a higher virus rate. What is the science behind that? Obviously, if parents don't feel comfortable letting their children play, that's all right. For those of us that feel comfortable, we would like the option to do so. We understand the equipment will not be sanitized. I doubt that other parks that are open are sanitizing. Please reconsider this decision, open them, and the water features. Thank you. That's Michelle Sandford.
What, Brad, would you like to comment on that one, or? Is that what you're?
Yeah, I certainly can.
Yeah, go for it.
Sure. Well, Michelle, we got half, she's going to be happy, 50% of it. So we are going to open up the splash pads, like I just mentioned. But per Dr. Lou's order, which is our Bay County Health, so that's obviously Sutter County and Yuba County, she is adamant about not opening up the playgrounds. I am part of a compliance call on a weekly basis with both counties, including Wheatland, Live Oak, Marysville ourselves, and of course, Sutter County and Yuba County, and we all are supposed to be under the same umbrella. And I believe all the playgrounds are closed as it relates to that. And it is confusing, I understand, because the parks are open, we put the basketball hoops back up. It is just, Dr. Lou does not feel comfortable opening up the playgrounds.
Okay, thank you. We have one more?
And the second letter. Hello, I would like to know why Yuba City is continuing to keep the playgrounds closed and will not open the splash pads. Neighboring counties such as Placer, who have a higher number of COVID cases, have opened theirs, as well as some in Yuba County, and we have the same public health officer. The children in our community need healthy outdoor exercise. Thank you, Amanda E.
May I comment? So just the clarification, I, I think in the letter, it says something about Placer County having the same health officer. It does not.
Actually, she was talking about Yuba County.
Okay. She, she did mention Placer, but then she, when she mentioned Yuba, she said we have the same.
Same answer. As far as the splash pads, based on what I just heard from council, we will have those open up within the next couple of days.
All right, very good. That's interesting, like you were saying, Brad, how it can be confusing, because we have different health officers, and we're on that, that, that bubble where you can interpret both ways, and it comes down to open or not, and some people are more, ready more than others. It's just the way it is, of those opinions of trying to play it safe, or, or what amounts to some risk. So that's where we are right now. But as time goes, as long as things continue the way they are, we're going to be open up pretty, pretty much more.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Brad, when will the splash, what will be the hours of the splash pads?
The splash pad hours will be, or should be, from 11:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. And the concept there is because as it warms up later in the day, in the next couple of days, we're going to have 100, so we'll push hard to have those opened up tomorrow, actually. And that, that's the reason why. If it's council's desire to open them up earlier, we certainly can do that as well.
And then just one other point of clarification. In Dr. Lou's order, I believe that playgrounds can be open, provided that they're sanitized on a regular basis, and the reason that we're not recommending to open them is because we're not sanitizing the playgrounds. Is that accurate?
That's correct. We don't have the staffing available to do that. And, and in some of the letters that I've read in the last week or so, you know, some of the parents have offered to clean them, which is very nice and, and awesome, but the problem is, is that they're not continually cleaned.
And then finally, I see that there's a comment from Mr. Trainer. It's noted that that's under item nine. I don't believe that that's under item nine in reading the comment.
Where would you like that read?
I think it'd be appropriate to do it under this item.
Okay. Let me go ahead and read it? Okay. All right, this is from Phil Trainer. Having limited knowledge regarding webinars, I hope the following might be considered by our council and the city executives. The Planning Commission stated that road maintenance would be reduced by $150,000 when compared to last year's budget. Potholes and reduced road maintenance is responsible for additional expenses to the citizens' automobiles. The wastewater and water treatments continue to increase their revenues, which in turn is consumed by various departments of the city. Problem is, the general public are unaware that their water and sewage bills, while increasing, tend to cover other explained expenses. Can't some of the profits that is generated by these two departments be used for our streets, or perhaps the citizens could be asked to patch areas in the vicinity of their property? Truckers coming off of Highway 99 utilize residential streets to make their deliveries, and those same streets break down due to oversizing of vehicles. Thank you for your efforts, Phil Trainer.
And thank you, Phil, if you're watching. Diana, would you care to elaborate or clarify some things for Mr. Trainer?
I can. So the $150,000 reduction to the Road Rehabilitation Capital Improvement Program account is related to the projected reduction of gas tax due to the COVID-19 issue. Water and wastewater funds are enterprise funds, can only be spent on water and wastewater-related facilities. We couldn't use those funds to repair streets. That's not associated with some type of water or wastewater repair. We can't address, you know, truck, damage from trucks and those types of things. It can only be applied to water and wastewater-related expenses. In addition, last year, council did not increase water and wastewater rates, and again, this year, council is not recommending to increase water and wastewater rates at this time. And so to say that the revenues are increasing, what we saw from the budget presentation last week was, in fact, that we're projecting reduced revenues for the water fund, and the wastewater fund is expected to be about on par as last year.
All right, thank you very much.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I guess I'm confused as to why the Planning Commission would be weighing in on, on budget stuff that hasn't been decided.
It was their annual review of the capital improvement program, and what happens is they review it, and then the recommendation goes to council for approval. So it's a step that we are required to take, to have the Planning Commission review the capital improvement program.
Thank you.
Let me probably just verbalize that the, the number is 150. Wasn't a deliberate act, I don't think. All right, do we have any other public comment that may have come in online?
Nothing yet, Mayor.
All right, we'll move on to consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council staff or public request public items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Any comment on consent calendar from the public?
None, receipt?
All right. And we can go ahead, and if anybody wants to pull anything, that's fine. If not, we can, we would approve.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
Move to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
First and a second by Councilmember Espandola. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? None, thank you very much. Number eight, business items, city administration job reclassification. Welcome, Natalie.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and city council members. Tonight, I am presenting the reclassification of the Assistant to the City Manager to the City Clerk Administrator. So as some background, as you know, there is a, an electorate, I'm sorry, an elected city clerk, and then there's a staff member who is responsible for all of the specialized skill, skills that the position requires. So the elected city clerk does ceremonial and official functions. They are elected every four years. And then the staff member deals primarily with elections, Brown Act, Public Records Act, some pretty critical functions. We did some, some research once Ms. Locke, the current Assistant to the City Manager, put in her retirement notice. And we found that the City Clerk Administrator title is a more accurate title, as well as that the work performed and responsibilities fits more into the mid-manager bargaining unit. And so the changes that we're recommending is changing the title Assistant to the City Manager, that's an executive team position, excuse me, to the City Clerk Administrator, which would be a mid-manager position. You can see from this slide that there's a staggered approach, and the reason for the staggered approach is that Terrell, Ms. Locke, will be working until her retirement date, until, and that, so we want that position to move aft, out of this salary schedule after her retirement, but we want to start recruiting for the City Clerk Administrator, so we want it effective as of this evening, and if it's approved, so we can start that recruitment process. So there is no changes to the salary composition, or compensation, I'm sorry, and the City Clerk Administrator will report directly to the city manager. So I wanted to give you an idea of what the recruitment and selection timeline is going to look like. It will be an external recruitment, and we estimate that this person would be onboard around mid-September. So at this time, I will take any questions that you may have.
Nothing from the dais? All right. Any public comment?
Not so far.
All right, we can move on to action.
Through the mayor?
Sir?
I can make staff's recommendation, adopt the resolution authorizing the reclassification of the Assistant to the City Manager position to City Clerk Administrator. B, the Finance Director amend the salary schedule to add a City Clerk Administrator job classification, and remove the Assistant to City Manager job classification.
Second.
All right, first and a second to approve staff's recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? None, thank you very much. Number nine, 2019 Inflow and Infiltration Project.
The item before you tonight is approval of the plans and specifications for the 2019 Inflow and Infiltration Project. So to explain the difference between inflow and infiltration, what we're talking about is the wastewater collection system. So inflow is where stormwater enters the sewer collection system through things like roof drains or holes in manhole lids, that type of thing, versus infiltration is groundwater seeping into the sewer collection system. Regardless of where the water comes from, what happens is it goes through the lift stations within the collection system to make its way to the wastewater treatment facility, where not only does it add electrical costs for the pumps to pump that additional water, but it also adds additional chemical costs for the treatment of the additional water. Yuba City during some years has a very high groundwater table, particularly in the northwestern portion of town, in the Terrebonne area, and then as you get closer to the levee. And so in high groundwater years, where we have manholes or service laterals that leak, we see a large intrusion of groundwater and stormwater. So this map shows the, some of the locations of the High I and I. And so again, out in the northwestern portion of town, where we have high groundwater table along Hooper Road, and then also El Margarita Road area. So through this project, the contractor would go in and repair the manholes, and then also repair the service laterals. So the engine's estimate is $265,000. We would advertise for bids in June, bring it back for award in July, with construction being completed this fall. So with that, I'm requesting that council adopt a resolution approving the plans and specifications for the 2019 Inflow and Infiltration Project and authorizing advertisement for bids.
Any public comment?
None, receipt, Mayor.
All right. So we have staff's recommendation.
Through the mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to adopt a resolution approving the plans and specifications for the 2019 Inflow and Infiltration Project and authorizing advertisement for bids on the project.
Second.
All right, first and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
And opposed? None, thank you very much. Moving on to number 10, the 2021 Budget Reduction Scenarios. Thank you, Diana.
Good evening. So last week, as part of the budget workshop, the Finance Director Spencer Morrison noted that we would be bringing back before you tonight different options to address the projected $3.5 million shortfall for fiscal year 2021. So as a reminder, in November 2019, the city council adopted eight priorities, which guide council's direction on the allocation of resources. So here are the eight priorities in no particular order. With public safety, the goals to ensure the highest level of public safety. Fiscal stability, to maintain and enhance the fiscal stability of the city. With the organizational culture, foster a culture of customer service, transparency, and accountability. With business-friendly convey that Yuba City is open for business. Enhance partnerships, strengthen and develop partnerships within our region. With quality of life, maintain and enhance our quality of life. Infrastructure, identify and address our infrastructure financial needs. And homeless and vagrancy, address homeless issues in our community. So here's a brief recap of So here's a brief recap of what we heard last Tuesday. With the general fund revenues expected, based upon the current knowledge that we have, of $42.7 million, general fund expenditures of $46.3 million, we have a projected shortfall of $3.5 million. So the presentation tonight will focus on department reduction scenarios. So the police and fire departments prepared two and a half and five percent reduction scenarios, while the non-safety departments prepared two and a half, five percent, and seven and a half percent reduction scenarios. We'll also go over the option to utilize other discretionary funds and then bargaining unit discussions. So here is a table that summarizes the fiscal totals related to the budget reduction scenarios. Police and fire departments make up 38 and 25% of the general fund expenditures respectively, for a total of 63%, meaning that the non-general, non-safety departments make up the remaining So this table shows the dollar values associated with each reduction scenario. So for instance, if council were to direct staff to proceed with the two and a half percent across all departments, the projected savings would be $1.55 million. Versus if council directed staff to proceed with a 5% for the safety departments, a 7.5% for the non-safety departments, the corresponding anticipated savings would be $2.76 million. Not to leave the enterprise fund out. If you do the same exercise for water and wastewater, for water, the reduction result in anywhere from $287,000 up to $862,000. For wastewater, it's a minimum of $352,000 up to $1,037,000. The one thing I would like to note with the water and wastewater funds is that they're different than the general fund departments in that they're swapped and that their salaries and benefits portion is a much smaller portion compared to material services and supplies. When you look at general fund departments, typically salaries and benefits is a much larger portion of the budget compared to material services and supplies. With the options related to discretionary funds, freeze vacant positions and evaluate filling them on a case-by-case basis. Over the last five years, vacancies have resulted in 1.85 million in savings, and over the last 10 years, 1.33 million in savings on average. Many of the department reduction scenarios that are going to be presented tonight assume that vacancies will remain frozen. Freeze non-essential travel and restrict training. Only approve training and travel necessary for employees to maintain certifications or required training to perform their jobs. Do not contribute the 10% match to the Yuba Sutter Lodging Association. That's currently budgeted at 127,500. Hold or reduce the general fund contribution to the vehicle replacement fund and evaluate replacement of vehicles on a case-by-case basis. That's currently budgeted at $800,000. Draw from the pension stabilization trust. The current, or the projected balance as of June 30th is $2,447,255. Lower the unallocated general fund CIP. As of June 30th, it's expected to have an allocated remaining of $418,334. In addition, there's $500,000 set aside that's recommended for unexpected needs. And then finally, utilize the healthy cities reserve, including the fiscal year 1920 projected budget shortfall of $458,400. The balance is $6,377,622. It's important to note the bargaining units. As of July 1st, we have five represented bargaining units that will have open contracts. Those bargaining units include the Yuba City Firefighters Local 3793, Yuba City Fire Management, first level managers, mid-managers, and public employees local number one. There are items that could be brought before the bargaining units for consideration, such as freezing merit increases. That's not something that's done at the, in the past, because it's typically a smaller dollar amount. Just to give you an idea, the estimated value of general fund merit increases for fiscal year 2021 is $284,706. And it should be noted that employees that have been hired within the last couple of years, their increases are based upon two and a half percent merit increases versus employees that have been here longer, it's based upon a 5% merit increase. Regardless, any reduction scenarios, the impact wages, hours, and working conditions will require that the city follow the meet and confer requirements to discuss impacts. In regard to implementation, there are still many unknowns related to COVID-19. And so the projections are based upon the best available information that we have. However, it's expected that we will have better sales tax information in the late August, early September timeframe. So with that, the Finance Director, it's recommended the Finance Director come back and provide you quarterly updates as to the budget and the revenue projections and expenditure projections. And staff recommends that council adopt an approach of implement, monitor, and reassess. So utilize a combination of discretionary funds and reduction of department budgets, with the goal of not cutting too much too soon or cutting too little too late. And with that, we would recommend that the Finance Director bring forward an update in the September timeframe for the previous three months. We evaluate at that point in time, determine if additional reductions are required, and reassess, and continue that process over the upcoming fiscal year. So as of now, I would like to invite Chief Landon up to discuss the police department reduction scenarios.
Mayor, we received a public comment. Do you want it now? No question?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. All right. And this probably is going to be more for Diana. That's why he's trying to get it in. The question is from Gary Stuckey, and he wants to know, why is water and wastewater not seen as a public safety function?
In terms of how we have traditionally classified departments, police and fire are considered safety departments. The other departments are considered non-safety, and that's the nomenclature that we've used to reference them. In terms of water and wastewater as consumers, that is considered a health and safety issue, but it's really how we define departments. And Natalie probably has a better response to that in terms of the official bargaining unit and that type of description, but that's the difference.
All right. Thank you. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. So I apologize if I'm a little passionate. When I was first appointed as a police chief, they said I was supposed to be the advocate and protect and serve. So that's my role. I take it seriously. And we're talking about budgets and cuts with everything going on in this community right now. I just want to be very upfront and let you know that I am passionate. I hope it doesn't come across any other way. So I wanted to go to a number, but I don't know how to backslide it. So I'm just going to tell you guys that the number that was pointed out there earlier said that our budget was 38% for the police department of the general fund. And I know Spencer presented something earlier to you guys in the week that showed that the actual average police departments were 45. So I want to point that out, just to let you know, on a $15 million budget, which is what we have, you can do the math and figure out it's a little over a million dollars that we are currently underfunded. I won't say underfunded, I will just say different than the average. So the Yuba City PD was asked to present two different scenarios, two and a half and five percent. The reduction from the police department budget of $15,507,875 equates to $387,697 and $775,394 for a 5% budget reduction. And just to start it off with a statement, I just want to quote something that was, we've gone through this before in 2010, 2011, and one of the, everybody has in this area. Stockton had a lot of debate going back and forth, and one of the statements that was put in their paper was from an advocate of law enforcement. And he basically said, "Social issues and economics drive crime down more than the number of police officers. However, the more cops you have available, the more ability you have to drive crime down. Common sense, countless studies, and obvious reality dictate this fact. But what is really at stake here is the level of service we can live with as we go through reductions. Cut police positions, and it will affect dramatically a variety of things that we have come to expect, things like response times to calls, less time and ability to properly investigate crimes, less crimes investigated, less accidents investigated, less ability to arrest offenders, and less ability to respond to critical incidents, and so much more." As far as will crimes go up? Maybe not immediately, maybe not at all. So I guess it all comes down to what is the quality of life that we're willing to live with. The impact of losing an officer at the Yuba City Police Department equates to about 2.8% of our patrol staff. Historically, I want to go back to 2008, 2009 to show why we are going to personnel cuts and why we're going to officer, I'm not saying we're going to the cuts, but that's why we have to explore from that aspect, was in 2010, 2011, we were staffed at 103.5 positions full-time for the police department. Two years later, when we did the budget reduction in 2010, 2011, and that was 91 and a half, or 2010, 2011, we went from 103.5 to 91.5 full-time positions, so a reduction of 12. We went from 68 sworn officers down to 65. We lost three dispatchers and four community officers, service officers. In the recent proposed budget, we allotted 96.5 positions if we maintain the status quo of what we have right now, and we hire the positions that are currently frozen. Out of those, 67 are sworn. So in that 10-year period, we went from 68 sworn officers down to 65, and now we're at 67, as our population increased throughout that 10-year period. So we're still at a 6.8% staff reduction from 2010, 2011. So we're really thin in most areas of department, and we're not able to make cuts from our support staff, because that's something that never got staffed back up in order for us to reach those numbers. I know a question was brought up today, is it looks like the police department is the only department that is increasing their budget, I may be misspeaking here, but increasing our budget based on the currently projected budget coming forward. And I'll tell you right now, we're not asking for more stuff, that's coming from pay raises. So it does look like we are going up. It's not like that we are asking for any more MSNF and no additional staffing. When we're talking about the other areas about MSNS, we just don't have the ability to do that, and I'll get down to that a little bit here. In our city vehicle replacement fund, I know we're already currently talking about motorcycles, and out of our current motorcycles, we are currently looking to go through the lease. We've already had those vehicles for approximately four years in February 2021, which means we've extended them for a year beyond their extended life, or beyond their shelf life already. And as we look at that budget, there's no money in that replacement fund for them. There is zero dollars in that replacement fund. I think it's a negative balance, if I'm not mistaken. So we can't take money out of the vehicle replacement fund because of the law enforcement department. We replace our vehicles, and they're not always fully funded. We don't have control of that budget, and it's basically a city thing, citywide function that is over time, and for historically, we have not funded it to the proper levels. And we're feeling that right now. We're not able to do that in our department. We currently have four 2016 patrol vehicles that we extended for one year in order to obtain a higher balance in their replacement fund. We like to replace our vehicles at 100,000 miles. I think all law enforcement agencies do, because they're driven daily, sometimes two shifts, we rotate them around, but it's not enough for every officer to have a vehicle. So we've extended four of our vehicles this year that we did not ask for, and they are past their life as far as time, but they do have some mileage left on them. Another fact is currently the Yuba City Police Department does not provide law enforcement services to the Walton Annexation Area, a population of approximately 11,000 citizens. In order to meet the demands of the additional area and population, the Yuba City PD would have to add an additional six patrol officers, one community service officer, and one dispatcher. It's been since 2000 since we've provided service to that area, and it's our number one phone call that we take about why we aren't providing levels, or our same level of service to that area as the rest of our city. And I will say Sutter County Sheriff's Department does an excellent job, and CHP does an excellent job of that area, but they don't have the same level of officers in an area, they don't have the same level of code enforcement or code community service officers as well. So those are all things I just wanted to give historically. If we cut police officers, and that's what we're looking at doing, the first impact will be in ancillary positions. This is our two and a half percent scenario. It's $47,750. It's a little bit above what we would ask for currently, and we can get this way through freezing positions. So we have two open community service officers right now. We have one open officer position right now. We have three dispatcher positions that are open, but there is no way in the world that we can hold those open and provide a quality service to this city. We would not be able to answer 911 calls in a timely fashion. And then we have another officer that we just recently hired. So when we look about letting him potentially finish the academy and exploring that option, trying to be creative, let him finish till January as we reevaluate our budget over time, we have to make a decision. Do we bring him back, or do we allow him to test somewhere else or go to another agency? So if we cut police officers, the first impact's going to be in ancillary positions. A combination of traffic officers, detectives, gang officers, and/or our homeless liaison officer will be moved to patrol, because the police department's number one function is to answer 911 calls. That's what we are tasked with doing, that's what we need to do. We'll have less resources to handle transient issues, homeless issues. If we take the officer out of traffic, cuts will be, lead to less enforcement, longer response time to traffic accidents, and potentially an increase in traffic accidents, because we have four traffic officers. So you can kind of do the math and figure out each one's going to reduce it about 25% if we just had traffic officers doing enforcement. So we would look at, like I just explained. Officer is just another factor, is officers take over one year to recruit, to pass a background, to pass psychological testing, to pass medical evaluation, to complete police academy, and pass a four-month field training program. For every officer position, we do not fill, we must wait a full year in order to completely fill that position. And I say that because that's what we've experienced in the past. I think right now, being down one position is the best we have been since we did the original budget reductions. Current, if we, the CSO positions, community service officers, there are non-sworn officers who respond to, recall with no suspects, they can do traffic accidents, they can do parking enforcement, they can do a majority of other things that an officer does not have to handle. When you lose a community service officer, what happens is now the officers that are on that shift are forced to take those calls, which amounts to less proactive time for them to be doing other things, because now they're forced to do the cold calls. So that's basically the two and a half percent reduction, is by immediate, through that standard. Now, I'll stop for questions right now, if anybody has any questions about our two and a half percent scenario.
I think we're good, Chief.
And that equates to a $470,000 budget savings.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Through the mayor. Chief, so the community service officers, we have two openings that are, in this scenario, freezing, but we still have the two other officers.
No, in this scenario that I'm proposing right now, we will have to freeze the two CSO positions. One of them just became open, the other one is fairly open, recently opened, because we had an officer go from CSO to officer, and he's currently attending the academy. We will still have to freeze an officer position for a year, and we would still freeze one dispatch position for six months. We have a current promotional position open for a dispatch three, which is a supervisor. We would hold that open for six months as well, not promote until January. And then we would allow the officer number two, who we just hired, to finish the academy, re-explore that as we come forward in the, looking at the budget.
Okay. So we still have the community service officer, but there's really one position, person transferred? So you're saying both would be freeze at this point, in this scenario?
In this scenario, two would be, we do have two other CSOs currently on the road. So it would be 50% of our patrol staff.
Okay, 50, okay.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Right?
Okay. That's what I was needing clarification. Okay.
Absolutely. So as we get to 5%, I'll just say that's pretty draconian for us in the police department, because again, we'd have to go to police officers' positions and able to attain that. So we would have to pick three more sworn officer positions, and we'd lose those officers, which would put us down a total of five officers if we count the first two that we would have given up. So what I did ask is I wanted our staff to put some stuff together too, because I know I missed a lot of things in the course of my going through this staff report. And I wanted them to also give me the impacts of cuts, because one of the council members had asked for, what are the direct impacts? So in addition to what I've already pointed out, what does a loss of community service officers do? And I don't want to be repetitive, so I may have covered a lot of this, but currently they spend about 30% of their time on parking issues. That would be lost. 15 to 25% of the CSO time is spent on serving subpoenas, which is very necessary, but very mundane, and an officer doing that function really takes them away from his ability to be a patrol officer. But that has to be done, and we have to do it as a police department. So that'll be picked up by patrol officers, further reducing their availability. Truck off-road parking become a lower priority and will lessen the quality of life issues as we will no longer have those positions to do that. CSOs allow officers to handle issues with suspects. CSOs allow officers to handle issues with suspects and to contact homeless, et cetera. This time will also be impacted. Dispatchers loss, I really don't even want to get into the dispatcher loss because as Vice Mayor Boomgarden knows, it doesn't just provide service for the police department. It's the fire department. It's after hours, all kinds of stuff. We can't afford that. We just can't hire enough dispatchers right now, and nobody can in the state. So we're doing the best we can. We have two candidates right now, and hopefully they go through training soon. Officer losses. The two lost positions would have to come from a combination of these, either traffic, homeless liaison officer or gang enforcement officer. The traffic officer, I already explained what happens when we lose that. The homeless liaison officer is very important to us, incorporates so many different facets. We just signed the new HART MOU that allows us to participate with the other agencies to get some type of a conglomeration and just an exponential amount of people on the streets by consolidating with the other departments. We would no longer be able to do that. And with the gang officer, we have seen an uptick right now in gang activity in the regional area, and I think that is something that we've been monitoring very carefully. We just did a big, a very big sweep this past week where we had 32 officers from the multi-jurisdictional areas go out and start serving probation, searches, and other things. But we would lose a gang officer, and when we do those Y-SAGE type operations like those sweeps, we'd lose the intelligence that we normally would have in order to do an effective sweep of gang members. And again, on the second scenario, then we're basically picking what are we pulling out of because we've already picked the first two. The homeless liaison officer would obviously be gone at that point, traffic officer or gang officer, and then we're going to have to look at the other ancillary positions. I just feel right, right now in this climate, as I'm looking out and seeing what's happening in our community, communities all across the United States, we're watching it every day on the news, is that we need the public trust. And I think that that's been very important at the police department as we've gone through all our different scenarios. Our number one target has always been community-based policing. As you reduce officers, you allow, you reduce the ability to get out there and make those contacts. You reduce the ability to have that one-on-one relationship, the ability to go into the schools and talk to the kids and just be a part of their life that helps us when scenarios are out here, when people are protesting, when scenarios are out there, when you can just go up and talk to a group of people because you know them through your different community service. So in conclusion, the PD's never fully recovered structurally from the 2010, 11 budget. Current staffing is 7% below that price to the, prior to the reductions. We don't have the maneuverability to cut from MSNS. The cost of professional services, outside costs, testing and training is significantly increased. We just recently, the state keeps mandating more traffic, more training to us. Our officers just received racially biased, biased training, implicit bias training, which was very timely with everything that's going on right now. But our MSNS, every year, it's not in our control what training is assigned to the police department. We don't have the ability to say, yes, we're going to take it. No, we're not going to take it. The state's going to pay for it because the state's not going to pay for it. We're going to have to figure out how to do that. The state has also come up with a new mandate on how we track contacts with citizens. So we've kind of got ahead of the curve and getting some equipment right now through our cops grant that'll help us. And what I'm talking about is every time we contact a person out in the field, we have to write down or we have to document nationality, age, there's how many criteria? 30 something different criteria an officer has to do on every stop that they make. And if you can imagine on a fast, if you're just doing a finger check or, there's, there's other agencies that are doing it now on a trial basis, and they're taking 10, 15 minutes or sometimes even longer with every single contact. So our officers are going to make less contacts just because of the state mandates. It's, it's one of the things that we are doing, and I think it's a good thing to do that, but I think it's a very, it's, it's hard for the city to absorb that type of training and not be reimbursed for the cost. But it is important because it reduces racial profiling, and we do track our data after that. We're able to put it in, required to put it in to a database that the state will track. New mandates also de-escalation of force, the use of force, changing the criteria for use of force are now being instituted to all agencies in California. That's also important, but it's also comes at a cost. So we can't touch our MSNS budget, and on a normal year, we'd be asking for more, but we're trying to figure out creative ways not to do that by training instructors, by doing the training at the police department, having our, we've gone out on a bunch of new ventures, and had it not been for Zoom and the COVID, we'd probably be exploring them a little bit more. Those losses will be impactful and reduce the quality of life and the ability to respond to emergencies at the same level as we currently provide because we are going to be tracking all these people on every stop. So bottom line, we're all part of the same city. We all want to make the reductions. We want to do what we can to help, but I just don't think that I'd be a good advocate if I didn't tell you everything that is, we're faced with each decision that we make and how important it is to make the decisions going forward.
Do you have something? Yeah, go ahead.
Through the mayor, Chief, thank you. I've known you, I'm a man of great passion for your department for the years that, that we worked alongside each other, and I definitely hear it, and I know your staff feels the same way. There's just a few things I want to click down. I agreed with most of what you said. I do want to address the Walton area issue. What might be unbeknownst is that there is a current effort right now. Councilman Shawn, myself, have been appointed by the rest of the council to deal with a master tax exchange agreement. You can rest assured that the topic of protecting in the Walton area is, is top of mind, and the folks that, Ben Moody and Diane are also on that committee. You know, our consultants are leading us to believe, and I trust them, that there may be some light at the end of the tunnel as long as we can get together with the county and get this agreement for the Bog Stewart done and then move it up towards the area that it's impacting, had impacted the Walton area. I don't hear myself, and this is where I slightly just, I don't hear a lot of pleas from the Walton area for us to be down there. I'm cognizant of the fact that those do exist, so I'm not challenging that. But as I'm making decisions up here today in this extreme situation that COVID-19 has brought to us, it's not necessarily one of my higher priorities to extend your services beyond that which you can already provide service for. There are some alternatives, and right now we're there. I do, I do want to talk about the vehicle replacement fund, and I want to thank you for your phone call this morning to address my questions in that regard. I had an experience as a young department head when I was basically told that I shouldn't pay attention to the vehicle replacement fund. It had nothing to do with my department. And frankly, and that's not anybody that's in this room or on staff right now, but that, that basically was a slap in the face because it absolutely had everything to do with my department. It had how I funded my fire engines, and I know that's how it's funding your, your police vehicles. I think the vehicle replacement fund for many years has been sort of a, a place to hide money or go get money, and it hasn't been fully funded, and it hasn't been administered fairly to the departments, in my opinion, and that's just one person's opinion. As we move forward, I think this council should consider taking a look at that fund. It's extremely important that, especially for our public safety departments, that those vehicles that our officers and firefighters respond in are safe and that we can provide the kinds of vehicles and, and types of vehicles that they need to provide their service. So as it relates to the motorcycles, you know, I'm looking for creative ways to fund that. By no means am I suggesting that we don't. I just think that those are vehicles, those should come from the vehicle replacement fund, and the five people that are sitting up here on the dais need to figure out how to, how to make the vehicle replacement fund do what it's supposed to do on a go-forward I raised the question of, of the optics of the police department budget being, looking as the only department that's increased. And again, I'm going to speak on behalf of myself. One of the reasons that that is the case, and you mentioned it, was because of salaries that were negotiated on behalf of our police officers. And why did we do that? Because we want to recruit and we want to retain. And if we don't do that, then we're going to be a constant revolving door. We're going to have people leaving the organization and going someplace else. So when people look at, why is the police department, why are they, why are they being held, you know, up against other departments? You only need to look up here. We agreed to the contracts, and the reason we did was because we want to make sure that we have an adequate police force and that those that we recruit stay with us and that if we do have vacancies due to attrition or retirements, that we can attract the kind of people that provide service to the city of Yuba City in the former fashion that, that we want. As far as the dispatchers, I want to add one other thing. Dispatchers do emergency medical dispatching, and so it's not just taking the 911 call, passing that on to fire and whatever. There are instances, and I don't know the numbers anymore. I'm sure your staff could provide those, but they are the first line of perhaps helping somebody who's in great distress in regards to saving their lives, and we've had experiences with that in the city of Yuba City. So when you start talking about dispatchers, you need to know that a portion of their, of their responsibilities and role is to take that call, process it, and in some cases, tell someone on the other end of the line how to save somebody's life. And I don't know that you can put a value on that, frankly. We are in a tough spot as a city council, and you know, throughout all the discussions, and I'm not going to get deep into it, we are in a tough spot of, of having to deal with what COVID-19 has, has done to the city as far as its sales tax revenue. And for me, public safety is police and fire. And for me, police and fire is something that we need to work very hard to try to maintain staffing and the service levels we're provided back 2008, 2009 is when, when it really got a bit serious. And I don't know that we've ever recovered, and this is going to throw another curveball at us, but I, I think, speaking again as one person, is that our public safety agencies, we need to try to hold them and, and allow them to provide the service at a level that we, that we feel our citizens deserve. And with that, Mayor, I'll conclude my comments.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, sir, ma'am.
Through the mayor, I just want to add, maybe a different view, Vice Mayor Boomgarden, on the Walton annexation because I am often asked, why isn't police, Yuba City Police responding to calls there? Not necessarily to say that the other two law enforcements that you mentioned aren't doing inadequate or a good job. It's just a question that often comes up in conversations because the idea was that the annexation part of it, that was an agreement years ago that some, at some point, the city would take over that particular part of our community. And at this moment, it's still, it, it's patrolled by other, other law enforcement, but it's part of our city, and, and many people that live there are not always pleased with the service that they get from the outside of law enforcement. So I would be interested in knowing if there could be further discussion on that in the master tax agreement, as you mentioned. I am concerned though that you mentioned, Chief, the idea that if we were to, you know, any of those scenarios, in particular the second scenario where you're talking about the reduction of 5%, where lawn, you know, five officers, and you're speaking of, you know, homeless and gangs. I'm also curious to know with the school resource officers, would that be in that conversation of those number of five, or is that separate because there's a contract and some other obligations already there?
So to answer your, your question on the school resource officers, yes, there is a obligation, and to be honest with you, they provide so much of a service down there, even if their contract wasn't covered, 50% of their, 50% of their salary, and I think 15% of the vehicle for that particular vehicle are covered by the school.
Right.
So yeah, we, we get a good bang for our buck, and we have a good relationship with the kids in the school as a result of the school resource officers.
Well, I would be really disheartened if that was a cut, but I'm glad to hear that you're not considering that of the five. But the homeless position that we have with Officer Troy, that he's been doing the work with a heart, has been a, a strong impact, a positive impact with the homeless community, which is part of that quality of life, which in long-term would be an improvement of savings because when we're dealing with homeless community members in different parts of our community, it costs quite a bit of money to then, if, if we don't have those resources or that partnership. My question is, I know, I appreciate, let me rephrase that. I appreciate your advocacy and your passion to this and the historical view, because I was not here in 2008 and nine. The reductions, in particular, I'm interested to know your thoughts about the vehicle replacement fund because prior to elect, elected and thereafter elected, there, that fund seems to be kind of the fund that was always discussed of a nature where why, why, why don't executive directors have more access to it or can, or some sort of decision opportunities about it? So you brought it up. What do you want to do with that fund if you had access to it?
Fully fund it, pay for all the vehicles that we want.
That was a big question, right? And I just let it go all the way through. What would you do if you, could you pay for the motorcycles out of that fund? Would you be willing to begin in that process of?
I'm not sure if you're saying, because right now, since it's not fully funded.
Right.
In any money we take out of that, we're losing a different vehicle. We're taking money out of a pot of a vehicle that isn't fully funded as well.
Right.
So I'm not sure.
I guess the question is more towards the motorcycles. Pay for it out of the vehicle fund, not out of the general fund.
I think at this point, that's not a question for me because I don't control the vehicle replacement fund.
I'm asking you, what would your opinion be if you had the opportunity to help with that decision, as you do?
So you're asking me, would I take it out of the general fund or would I take it out of the vehicle replacement fund?
Exactly.
I don't know enough about the vehicle replacement fund and what the current status is of it. I don't, where you find $125,000, that's a preferable way to take it out of the vehicle replacement fund because that's where it should come from because it's a vehicle replacement. But I don't know how.
You answered my question.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Through the mayor?
Sir.
If I may, sir, unless you had a comment?
Nope.
Okay. Chief, thanks for being here tonight. Just a couple of questions going back. I mean, first of all, I, I think all of our safety agencies, fire and police know how I feel about safety first in this community. And I go back to what you said as far as the positions. I think all safety has been under positioned for quite a while, and it's one of the reasons I ran for this office. We had that discussion where I was told by others that, no, you guys had more than enough, but at the same time, all we had to do is take a look around to know that neither department was staffed to the levels that it needed to be when you start looking at ratios. So to both departments, thank you, because I know you guys have worked through a lot of hell to do what you do for this city with one arm tied behind your back. So I'll start by saying thank you to both departments right front because, Chief, you're next, I know. But going back to the Walton, I'm wondering if we have a comparison cost because you brought up the Walton area. I echo the Vice Mayor's comments. Don't hear it that often, but you do hear people say about, when is the service going to be kept? It's more about a promise that was implied about 20 years ago is really what it boils down to because I've seen in my year and a half on the council that if anything happens that is, needed to be addressed in the Walton area, you guys are there. I remember an incident down at the school that you guys were right there with the Sutter County Sheriff. That was, I think it was last summer, but you guys were right there. And so I don't think there's a service degradation. I think it gets more back to broken promises from a long time ago, and I think that's where that stems from. But going back to the master tax exchange agreement, there's a cost associated with it. We've ran the numbers, and if we had to stand up those number of officers and get everything affiliated with it, I believe we were talking somewhere around a million dollars is what? Two million, three million?
Well, the initial stand-up cost for buying the vehicles and everything else was at one time 1.2 to 1.4 million. That was a couple of years ago.
Okay, it's significant is kind of what I'm trying to get to. And in that, there's a cost right now with the master tax exchange agreement for the Walton area that's nowhere near that, that they're taking out, and that has to do with a lot of things the Vice Mayor talked about that we've been trying to negotiate with Sutter County. And my hope and desire is with the financial impacts that COVID has done, Sutter County will go ahead and, and get together and, and let's get this done because we can not only address the, the current Stewart Road annexation and that master tax, tax exchange agreement, but there's carryover. We can look and find some stuff in Walton, and unfortunately, we're really setting at a standpoint waiting on them. So I'm hoping at some future, we can look forward for that. But it's not because we don't want to take care of the Walton area. We do the best we can now, and I want to say thank you for what you guys do already. The, a couple of questions I had, going back to what I heard happen back in '08 and, and there- and thereafter, everything was top-down with cuts and directives. And my feeling is we're all in this ship together. So I know that you, as chief, and your department heads, you guys have all worked together figuring this out. But if we had any feedback from the POA, the Sergeants Association, I'm sure they're aware of this because it's been no secret. After we had our budget meeting last week, there were $3.5 million upside down. What input have they had to you in this? Because it's going to take us all to figure out the solutions. Have they offered anything to this point?
So getting back to your first thing on the cut, it wasn't top-down. It was a totally cooperative effort. So this time, we don't have the ability to go in there. It's not like we can cut 5,000 here, 5,000 here. We don't have the ability. The only way that the police department can make the cuts is through personnel. Yeah, they've been talked to. And yes, we've got input from them. But we don't have a lot of leeway as where we can pull the money from, so.
Right. I was just looking to see if they may have had any ideas themselves on where there might be savings. None to this point, just hopefully save the ship?
Well, this is the first step right here, figure this out. And we'll go back afterwards and explore where we would take the positions.
Okay. And then just the other sentiment, and I realize that vehicle replacement funds have not been fully funded over the years. And that's where we get into the deficits for all the different departments across the board. I think that this council is going to have to take it under our counsel and figure out how to rebalance that. And because I totally agree. Not against the PD having motorcycles. I think they're a good asset. But I do strongly struggle with 125,000 coming out of the general fund. If it comes out of vehicle replacement, it may be a trade-off or something down the line. But I think that's where it honestly has to come from. And I think we're going to have to get creative up here to figure it out. But to my opinion, it cannot come out of the general fund when we're faced with a 3.5 million. Doesn't matter how much I'm for it, I just can't go there. It's got to come out of vehicle replacement. So but again, thank you for everything you guys do.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Chief. Really appreciate it. Will.
Here before the chief leads.
I appreciate all the information you provided. And it definitely made a good case for the importance of public safety and police department. And we're looking forward to hearing from the fire chief as well. Did you have a public comment?
There are two public comments for the chief. One is from David Collender. And his comment was reduction to schedule salary increase. And then the other one is from Tony Kurlin. And he's just wondering why the Walton area will take a backseat to the Boge-Stewart area, which won't be built out for years while the Walton area is built out and needs better policing.
Did you ever come out on that one? Go ahead.
I can probably respond to Mr. Kurlin's, what I'm assuming he's asking, which is why is Boge-Stewart's master tax exchange agreement occurring ahead of the Walton tax exchange agreement, the existing one? Is that's been our position that we want to get the Boge-Stewart master plan moving? And that the master tax exchange agreement associated with that is a priority? And that we can use the information gathered from that exercise and that agreement to overlay it on the existing agreement? And we think that that will benefit Sutter County and Uba City as well. Mr. Kurlin, you're more than welcome to give me a call or an email if you'd like further information on that. But that's the reason that Boge-Stewart master plan and master tax exchange agreement is sitting in the forefront right now.
Those, that's all the comments, sir? Okay. Grace, did you have something?
Thanks, through the mayor. I just had a question at any given time. And I don't want to get too into the weeds on this Walton annexation. Have, in recent times, let's say in the last five years, Chief or Diana, has there been a survey to ask the community in that area if they're interested to being annexed and served, well, served by our police department? Has anything been done in recently?
Not that I'm aware of. But more importantly, the master tax exchange agreement has a trigger as to when we could annex that area. And we don't currently meet that population number. So regardless of whether or not they were interested, it's based upon the current stipulations in the master tax exchange agreement.
So there's a population number trigger to cause for that?
Right. And that's why in the past, the city has proceeded with trying to annex that area along Highway 99, south of Franklin, between Franklin and Boge. Because if that were annexed, that would then trigger the city's ability to provide services to the Walton area.
That piece of information is very helpful. I think that the community knowing that, that would help bring more clarity to why that decision hasn't been made. And so I was not clear of that. I just learned that with the rest of us. So thank you for, I'm glad I asked the question then.
It's 82% is the number.
82% of what?
Yeah. Of the population in that area has to be incorporated or, you know, yeah. In the areas like Franklin to Lincoln, between North Township and.
Okay.
Highway, freeway.
Oh, we'll talk more about this. I can learn exactly the figure. Thank you.
So one thing I want to point out before I step down is that even though we haven't had increases that our number is down, that you guys did approve two officer positions in the last budget. So I know that this council takes public safety serious. And I know that they're looking after it and appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Chief. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. So I was also asked to put together a 2.5% and 5% reduction plan for the fire department. So I'll start off by saying, the fire department is a year and a half into a three-year SAFER grant. And one of those requirements of the SAFER grant is to maintain 51 line firefighters during the entire length of the grant. So going through that, that is one of the items that has to be maintained, maintained due to the grant, is those 51. So trying to analyze the budget and to see where to come up with these specific numbers, there's the other options to look at were the prevention department. With state mandates from the Ghost Ship Fire, analyzing the prevention department with one fire marshal and one current inspector. And due to the possibility of wanting to make sure that we're being very business-friendly, making sure that we're getting our plan reviews turned over in a timely fashion so that we're able to keep business going. And this time, you don't see any reduction in the prevention department. Very similar to the police department, trying to analyze the budgets over the years. Does not appear that we really recovered too much in our MSNS from the 2008 hits in those categories. So had to get a little creative in that regards. I do have some concerns about addressing the MSNS component of it due to some of the liability components just inherently in the fire service, whether it's specifically the turnouts that firefighters wear to the hose, thinking along the lines of fire, police officers in regards to the guns, the protective gear, things along those lines. So had to get very creative, not a lot of flexibility there due to us not really recovering in that category. So the next item was to look at the administrative component. So tonight, you had Mr. Fuller relieving, leaving, who was admin three analyst. However, for those who have worked with Mr. Fuller, he definitely performed the work of an assistant administrative chief. And to be quite honest, he was performing the work of two individuals in the way he conducted himself. So that was the area that we tried to focus on in regards to this 2.5% and 5% budget reduction plans. So freezing Mr. Fuller's position is the item that we started off with to start securing that. We currently have also a vacant assistant chief position that's being currently infilled with an interim battalion chief at that level. Ideally, what we'd like to do is move that noun and underfill that with a division chief position versus the assistant chief. And tailor those positions, those duties associated to that division chief component. But those were some pretty big numbers in trying to get to. So that 2.5%, that's just under 250,000 for the fire department. So try to get a little creative here and analyze some of the alternative budgets that we have. And one of the items in our vehicle replacement fund was our water tender. Analyzing to see when that was coming up, it still has four-year life expectancy on it. But then really kind of diving down into the numbers to see how often our water tender is dispatched, the mileage, hours, and the type of funds that are in there. We were able to determine that we were able to get an extended life on that due to limited wear and tear on it this time and the limited call volume that it takes. So that's the primary goal that we were able to work with to get to the 2.5% to get to that number is looking at the vehicle replacement fund. And the 5% model, we're just under 500,000 there. And so we're still using some of the similar options to work through that, more the administrative capacity. And then also taking more from that vehicle replacement fund for that specific vehicle. We did have to pull over a little bit from a Type 6. But due to a replacement of an engine in there, we were able to extend the life an additional years on that also. Concerns in regards to affecting the administrative component of the fire service is each one of those positions, whether it was Mr. Fuller working in the capacity of the administrative assistant chief or the current assistant chief vacancy that's in place. There's certain things that need, are very desirable to assist with the line staff in going forward. What I would expect council to want from me going forward is I would expect you guys want me to be prepared coming out and have an emergency operations plan, strategic planning, those type of items that are out there. Right now, due to the assistant chief position vacancy, we do not have a strategic plan in place for the department, nor an entirety emergency operations plan. We do have a slow-rise flood plan. In regards to some of those items that I'm also concerned in the administrative capacity in our department is how we've analyzed and looked at our facilities. We have two facilities currently that are in serious need of repair, Station 1 and Station 2. And we also have two apparatus that are in serious need of replacement. That would be our ladder truck and our Engine 1. And so having an administrative capacity to be analyzing, working on those type of materials is very beneficial. And so that is a concern of myself, of losing that capacity in those regards. But then I also look at the picture of supporting the line staff of going out. There are certain things that need to occur in regards to training of them, mandated training. Analyzing where we've been with that, there are some deficiencies coming in and noticing. Today, as example, we were working very hard to adopt the CICCs system, which is the California Incident Command Certification System, so that the line staff is able to go out and participate in mutual aid incidents that will help recruit some of those costs going out in those administrative funds when they go on deployments. So there is the need in the administrative component. But to make sure that we're providing the best service that we possibly can, that line staff of 51 will remain in place in both scenarios. And any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, first and foremost, welcome to Uba City and all that you've had to deal with in the last six months now, including COVID-19. I think the only comment I have is, maybe you could expand a little bit because this is of concern to me. I know it's been raised as concern from other council members is with Mr. Fuller's departure and, you know, the lack of staff directly reporting to you, how's that going to affect the city's ability to continue to develop and monitor and in some cases, upgrade our emergency response plans beyond that which just the fire department is involved with? But all the multi-hazard emergency plans that are important for us to have, if you will, on the shelf in case something happens in our community?
Great question. Example of that is you just never know when those type of emergencies are going to occur. God forbid, something happens with an active shooter. That was one of the very first questions coming in, was asking that question. What is our plan in place for an active shooter situation? Due to that lack of administrative capacity there, there has been no policies and procedures developed for active shooter protocols. And that's an area of concernment. So there's a lot of different categories that the fire service takes on, from hazardous materials to technical rescue. Developing those policies and procedures so that we are able to train and mitigate those issues is a prime concern to me, coming in this in administrative capacity. But looking at emergency operations planning, being able to project out in the future, to have that capacity and development for those unforeseen emergencies is key. Because you want to be able to support that line staff going out, giving them the knowledge capabilities, and knowing that the leadership is ready to go with those contingency plans at all time. And so, yes, that's a very big concern.
I think the other thing, and this is more for the council members, is, you know, our fire department relies a lot on mutual aid, especially in this area, because none of the departments here are strongly staffed. And, you know, I think everybody's aware of, even within Sutter County, some of the staffing issues they have. We rely heavily on mutual aid, automatic aid, which is not having to ask for help, it's just coming. The ability to have, you know, some depth behind the fire chief's position is important. And while Mr. Fuller was a fabulous administrative chief, I think the fire department has been without an operations chief essentially since I left back in 2009. And, you know, to me, this is a high area of concern. You know, Jesse Alexander is a wonderful guy, but there's only so much to Jesse Alexander. And when he's not available for family or vacation or training or what have you, then no disrespect to the others in the department. They pick it up. But we just don't have that depth of resource in the fire department. We could rattle off numbers about how we were staffed in 2007, 2008. It was a lot different than you are now. You're a lot less staffed. So again, when we start talking about cutting staff, I think your suggestions on some of the administrative positions are spot on. But as it relates to supporting emergency operations, we got to be very careful here. We are the big fish in the pond. And folks come to rely on us. And not that we have that obligation, but we are community-minded as well. But we also need to have enough resources within our city to handle our issues. And it's not like we're 20,000 anymore. We're 67, 68,000. And your call volume has skyrocketed from the time I left. So I don't want to sound totally like your advocate, but at the same time, I do understand what's going on and appreciate the reduction scenarios. I would just hope that when it comes to emergency planning, which has been a long concern of mine, is that, you know, we can accommodate at least some of that with what you're proposing.
Through the mayor, thank you. Thank you, Jesse. I appreciate it. The question that I have is, maybe this is what you were offering, Vice Mayor Boom Garden, is the operations chief or the vacancy that, you know, Bill Fuller is leaving a big impact, you know, as he's retiring. But as we worked on these grants and the SAFER grants and all of those duties, who's picking all that up? Since, is that part of the administration? Is that you?
So there's a lot of shuffling that would need to occur. Mr. Fuller took on, like I said, the role of two individuals. When you look in the fire service, there's five, I would look at it as five key hats that you need to wear. You need to have your fire chief, your administrative chief, which is handling grants, things along those lines, an emergency operations chief, emergency management, an operations chief, and a training. Yes, you can take some of those hats. You can combine them into one individual. But when you start to get into five with one individual, that gets to be a little bit of a concern. Because technically, right now, as of today, I have both of my assistant chief positions unfilled. So yes, in theory, that's five hats that I should be wearing at the time. There are some options that the city can provide with grant writing. However, again, adding a lot of those things, putting them into one. The interim assistant chief that we have right now, he is taking on a certain portion of that role. But as we all know, in regards to being an interim, until, again, new to this position, you really don't feel comfortable and dialed in to that until at least a year minimum. So I can't expect that individual to carry that. So I can't expect that individual to carry that huge, some of those huge loads at this time.
So the, the concerns I'm also hearing is the one that we support other, other, you know, calls and other needs and mutual aid, but what is very heightens my awareness and concerning even more is that we don't have these plans in place to respond to any, well, particular active shooter or some other emergency plan that, and, and the expectation at this point, without all the staffing, you don't have the, the administrative staffing to lean on. The expectation is that we have is that you're, you're the person to do all this. Am I understanding that correctly?
In the event that those positions become unfilled, then that would be correct, that I would be the primary contact. Yes, there's ways I can find to delegate some of those items out, however, just based upon the magnitude of some of them, it's difficult to delegate portions of those down to a line battalion chief due to the complexity of what they have on a daily basis with supervision, incident command system, all things along those lines. But yes, emergency management is, is a passion of mine. I've lived through that on some very significant incidents throughout my career, and I know the importance of having those plans in place and having people trained and follow those plans so that it's just a, hey, this is what's occurring, we dive right into this on those large-scale incidents versus the minor incidents that we might have on a daily basis.
Those plans are coordinated with the police department, aren't they not? In particular incidents, depending if there is an active shooter, some of those things are separate. We have two different plans going, I'm just curious to some of this coordination in the planning.
I can, I can speak on behalf of the, the fire department, I'll turn it over to the police because, again, active shooter would fall under the police department. However, on the fire department side, we are going to try to be involved in regards to a unified command system, and there's a lot of things that would play out and play that would affect the fire department and the emergency medicals component of it, so that we're providing the quickest level of care to people that are wounded. That would include police officers, civilians, and making sure that we're helping in any way we can on the emergency medical side. And so there's a lot of complexity that goes along with integrating the two agencies to make sure that it's done effectively. And so, yes, those plans in place, but I'll turn that over to the police chief in regards to that component.
I think the chief did a great job explaining that, but law enforcement, that is our, that's our thing, is active shooter, not our thing, but that's the thing that we train on all the time and every time, and we do train with the fire on that as well. So we have a very, we, we train with the, the schools and everything else. We have very good plans in place, and we have actual people that train the city, go to different businesses, and we do all kinds of additional training. And we will continue to work with the fire department.
Well, I appreciate the fact that both of you work together, but I think in listening to Fire Chief Alexander, that it's, he's new, new set of eyes, looking at things in a different perspective and trying to bring some of those emergency plans to, up to speed, and with the lack of administrative support that you have at this moment, to me, that is concerning for you as you just started with us. And, I mean, you've done a fantastic and amazing job, and I want to be supportive of, of those efforts and be supportive of those efforts along with our police. In, in particular with these times, if no one's watching the news, things are happening, and, and both of your, your services, as I say it, is our, our police and our fire chief and our fire services are critical and essential, and so I appreciate the work and I appreciate the aspect of you bringing some things to my attention that I, I was not aware of, so thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Anybody?
Through the mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Chief, thanks for being here tonight, thanks for your work. Echoing what we've heard so far, and I'm going to start off with kind of an obvious question is, can we call Bill back? Is he available?
That's a very good question, and I can guarantee that I've explored that option. There are some requirements that go along with that. Mr. Fuller has a very specific skill set that is going to be tremendously missed. However, there's some, are some requirements in regards to retired and new tenant playing that out, and in the short term, that would not necessarily be an option.
Thank you, and I think with what the council gave him tonight, he may not be in the right frame of mind to, to come to work later on this evening. But getting back on point, I, I want to echo what I've heard so far. I, just to look at the two different departments here, I'm looking at an entire executive team right here, for the most part, from PD, and then I look at the entire executive team for FD right there. Chief, as awesome as you are and as awesome as all these gentlemen are here, you're one person, and you got to recharge the batteries, and you got to have that fill underneath you. And looking at, you know, just what you said, that Mr. Fuller was doing the job of multiple people. We haven't had an assistant chief, we haven't had a operations chief, we haven't had any of those positions. What is your idea of combining, if you were looking at minimum-wise, how many bodies would it take to really give us that effective executive team and FD that we could have a safe city and you guys could get everything you need done, done? Is it, we're going to get there with, with one division chief and an administrative clerk? Or do we really need maybe a couple of division chiefs that are going to function in those roles? What's your thoughts on that?
Well, the primary emphasis is to make sure that I have that line staff going out responding to those daily calls, but to, and this is a unique situation that we're all in with COVID and everything going on, and so I understand it. So there's that time when you get to say, hey, there's the, what would be optimal and what we can make work. So the scenario that you have before you tonight is I can make it work and still maintain and still function and still produce. What would really be beneficial is to have two division chiefs, so that I can break that up and having regards to a division chief in charge of operations, but then also have a division chief that is maintaining those minimum training standards to reduce that liability to the department, to the city, making sure we're hitting those fundamentals of everything, and then allowing myself to be able to take on a little bit more of that emergency operations planning, strategic planning, things along those lines to look at the, the larger picture and prepare for the greater scope. So to break up those, those five hats.
Okay. And I know that both departments have by far never recovered from what happened years ago, so I, I get that we're fighting an uphill battle across the board. I'm going to ask you the same question that I asked Chief Landon. Have, have you received any feedback from the, the fire union as far as what their thoughts are on this? And what I meant earlier, Chief, when I said from the top down, is I, I know that the council kind of dictated, you know, we want this and this is what we want to see across the board. I'm looking to see if any of our, you know, unions or whatnot have any ideas that they may bring up to us as well through this whole process. And I'm a proponent of bringing everyone in early and often because we never know where an idea is going to come from. So has the fire union had any ideas on this? I know that, you know, they were scheduled for negotiations this year and everything else, but what's the sentiment? Have they come up with anything? Have they given you any feedback?
So right now, labor and management has a great working relationship. We talk frequently and we've had those discussions. I hate to speak for them on behalf of their thought process of where we're going, but just we're, we're today to try to schedule a meeting for Thursday to have some more in-depth discussions about options and very creative individuals. As I communicated to them, I'm one individual, I, I don't have all the answers. I try to devote as much as I can to be creative in regards to these, but I'm very receptive to receiving information, ideas, thought process to go forward, and they understand that.
And I appreciate that, Chief. And actually, the word you just said is really the word I was searching for and what I was trying to say, and that's receptive, because that's really what I'm looking for, is we've got to make decisions as a council, and I want us to be very receptive of any idea that comes up, whether it's from the newest recruit that we've had in any of the departments or from one of our department heads. We never know where that idea is going to come from. So thank you for giving me that word, so, and thank you.
Yeah. Through the mayor. I'm going to change this up a little bit. First of all, I want to thank the chiefs and all the department heads for, and the ones that are going to be coming up after the chief for these presentations. I went through this with the last group of individuals from 2008 to 2014. We all took it hard. There was a lot of bad things going on, the, the council back then, you know, they wanted a balanced budget, they did things they had to do to make the balance, the budget balanced. I wanted to make this comment for our council. I know Mark got lucky, he retired just at the right time of life, he didn't get to have to go through the recession as bad as all of us. Anyway, the vehicle replacement fund, council's asking this gentleman to cut his budget or give $288,000 out of his vehicle replacement fund to balance the budget. So this is why our fire department is $128,000 short, because years ago, the council asked that department to make cuts and to balance his budget, so he gave up money for several years, not just one, to make his balanced budget, and that's why that fund is short at this time. And I just wanted to make, let council know about this. I was going to wait, but that's sitting right in front of us, and I just wanted to make that comment to let everybody know at this time that that's why the vehicle replacement funds are short, because we had to balance the budget years ago, we had to balance the budget for seven years. It had to be balanced and we were short, so I just want to let council know about that. Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for everything you do.
Through the mayor?
Yep.
I want to clarify that the vehicle replacement fund, from the time that I was made the chief of this city, has always been a tool for budgets. It hasn't just in 2008. There were many, many times when there were questions about extending vehicle lives and all kinds of maneuvers that occurred with that vehicle replacement fund. So just to expand on Councilman Cardoza's, it wasn't just a 2008 maneuver, it's been going on for quite a long time.
I was a worker bee, not a department head. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much, Chief. Much appreciated.
So now I'm back to represent Public Works, and I'm very excited about that. So you'll have to excuse me because I have nine slides coming up. Since there's three different funding sources within Public Works, I'm going to cover general fund, water, and wastewater funds. One thing that I would like to note is that within the general fund is the street division. The street division has its own revenue source in terms of gas tax and other funds, but it's brought through the general fund, and so they are grouped into that. So I'm going to go over the two and a half percent scenarios first. So in regard to the general fund, our two and a half percent scenario, we're slightly over two and a half percent with this value of $236,513. So in terms of salaries and benefits, Scarlett Harris, the administrative assistant, was promoted to administrative analyst, and so we would propose to freeze the administrative assistant position for one year. I have to say that she's been very gracious to continue to fulfill some of the duties of the administrative assistant, so we're not fully utilizing her at the efficient capacity of an analyst because I'm still requesting that she perform some of the functions of the assistant, and like I said, she's been very gracious in doing that. I'm also in a very fortunate position in that because I am the interim city manager right now and anticipated to be so for a few months, my department benefits from that savings in terms of having the public works director position open, and then also we would propose to reduce the extra help budgets for primarily streets and then electrical. Material services and supplies, this is mainly through, one of the things that I just want to address is right now, the senior center is, custodial services are provided through an outside company. And so to get to this $48,825, one of the things that we're proposing is to take back the cleaning of the senior center. Again, in terms of agencies, I feel like Yuba City has the best custodial staff on the planet. These individuals care deeply for our facilities and, you know, they, they truly care about the product that they provide. In terms of vehicle replacement, this is a vehicle that is funded for engineering. The vehicle has been out of service and gone for quite a few months now, and we've been able to live without it within engineering, and so we would propose to take the money from that to put towards the two and a half percent reduction scenario. In terms of the water fund, again, because the administrative assistant and public works director are funded 50% general fund, 25% water fund, 25% wastewater fund, we would again see the savings in the water fund. In addition, we have a vacant water treatment plant maintenance supervisor that's been vacant for probably a couple of years now, and so we would continue to freeze that for six months. And one of the reasons that it's been frozen is that we do have a, a person on staff that has shown a lot of promise, and so, you know, this is a position that we feel like internally we could fill at some point in time, but we'd propose to freeze for six months under this scenario. The water treatment plant operator four, we would propose to freeze for three months. So this is assuming that we fill the chief plant operator position, we have a vacant chief plant operator. If we filled the chief plant operator internally, this would then create an opening at the operator four level, we would propose to freeze that for three months, and then underfill it at the operator two level. We have more success in getting operator twos, building them up, and so what's the difference between operator two and operator three? Operator two cannot run the plant on their own, they have to spend time with an operator three, they need to get the appropriate certification, and then they're able to operate the plant on their own. But that allows us to kind of grow our own, and then also, that's an extremely difficult field to recruit in, and that seems to be the level we're able to recruit. Again, reduce the extra help budget, not proposing to impact material services and supplies. And in terms of vehicle replacement fund, we're in a situation where some of the vehicles are overfunded, and so we would take that overage and apply it to the funding. On the wastewater fund, again, the administrative assistant, public works director, Karia Cross. With the promotion of one of our operators to the chief plant operator, we have a vacant operator three position that we would freeze for three months and then again, underfill. We have a budgeted operator and training position that we would freeze for one year. We have a vacant regulatory compliance administrator position that we would freeze for three months. The reason we've been able to keep this position vacant is we've been utilizing professional services to utilize consultants who specialize in regulatory compliance. By not filling this position, we would either continue to utilize the, the consultants or figure out how to coordinate with existing staff. Again, reduce the extra help budget. In regard to material services and supplies, again, a reduction of the extra, or the professional services. In relation to the vehicle replacement fund, we have some overages. Any, any questions on the two and a half percent scenarios?
I have a, through the mayor? I have a real quick one. I'm going to try to remain optimistic and say that, you know, by September, things are going to look a lot better. Is that the reason for the three months that you're suggesting is, is just to kind of wait and see?
Yeah, because we're, you know, we know that the recommendation is to analyze on a quarterly basis, and so, you know, if this was implemented, then be, to be able to reevaluate in three months.
Okay.
The other thing that I want to note is that we really tried to focus on existing vacant positions to not impact filled positions, and so therefore, as I get into the seven and a half percent scenario, it gets really tight in terms of material services and supplies, and I'll talk about that in a minute. But it was, it was very important for us to try to maintain the staffing that we have. Recognizing that reduction of extra help budgets does impact us significantly as well. For the five percent scenario, so again, we freezing the administrative assistant, public works director. In engineering, we have a vacant construction inspector position. We only, the times that we bring retired annuitants in, a retired annuity to help us with construction inspection is when we have a lot of projects going on or our senior construction inspectors on vacation or out of the office. And so we feel like we can freeze this position for a year. Again, reduce extra help budgets. In terms of material services and supplies, again, it's looking at reducing, so this one continues to assume that the custodians take over the cleaning of the senior center. It's also a reduction in professional services and heating power for the electrical division. Since we converted streetlights to LED, we do have a little bit of savings there, and then again, that one vehicle for engineering. For the water fund, you notice the water treatment plant maintenance supervisor is frozen for one year. We're now also freezing the chief plant operator for three months. The regulatory compliance administrator. The regulatory compliance administrator, again, would be frozen for three months, reducing the extra help budget. And the material services and supplies, this is where we start to get into more of the professional services, training, chemicals. The vehicle replacement fund is removal of two staff vehicles from vehicle replacement and then some, the overages that were utilized in the 2.5% scenario. In the wastewater fund, again, the regulatory compliance administrator for three months, reducing the extra help budget, more. Material services and supplies, you can see this starts to ramp up. $378,000, this is hitting professional services, chemicals, training. And then in terms of vehicle replacement, this is again, an overaccumulation. Where in the vehicle replacement fund, we have some vehicles that have accumulated more cash than what's projected for the replacement. And so we're fortunate to be able to have that as a potential option. So any questions on the 7.5% scenario, or 5% scenario? Okay. 7.5% scenario. So salary and benefits stay the same, material services and supplies. This is again, professional services and heat and power, and then that one vehicle from engineering. For the water fund, now the water treatment plant maintenance supervisors again frozen for one year. The chief plant operator is frozen for one year. This is very significant as we have a water treatment plant supervisor that still has a few years left in his career. However, the importance of getting somebody in that chief plant operator position to be able to fulfill that duty, hopefully, you know, groom them someday, because we like to groom in-house for, to promote up. This chief plant operator position's a key role within that division. They're typically the ones that do the reporting, respond to the state, monitor, you know, compliance, and also coordinate with the operators on their schedules and activities. Another hard hit would be regulatory compliance administrator frozen for one year. Again, this one's very tough, tough one to swallow just because of the impacts. As you guys are aware, in the water and wastewater industry, there's ever-changing regulations coming at the city with no corresponding revenue sources. And so having somebody that's solely dedicated to monitoring regulations to make sure we're in compliance is extremely important. Material services and supplies, this is again, professional services and hitting those chemicals again. And then the vehicle replacement fund, again, was removal of two vehicles and then some, a little bit of overaccumulation.
Through the mayor.
Diana, I'm sorry to interrupt you. On the regulatory compliance administrator, wouldn't it be cheaper to hire one than pay for a consultant to do the work for us?
Why, yes, it would.
Okay.
Which is why we would like to hire one.
Okay.
However, when you're in a situation where you're evaluating budgets, of course, you figure out, you know, ways to try to address that, doing the best that you can. So we would still be utilizing professional services and consultants, utilizing them less. I also have to say, we're very, very blessed with the operators that we have and the staff that we have in that we have a lot of historical knowledge within, not only Public Works, but throughout the city. And that's one of the reasons that this city is so efficient, is because we have people with a lot of institutional knowledge. And with these operators and the supervisors, they do a tremendous job of, you know, doing their homework, keeping us in compliance, having conversations. And like I said, this one would, this one would hurt. All of these scenarios hurt. But we also understand that this is an exercise we need to go through.
Thank you, Diana.
Mm-hmm. On the wastewater fund, again, the regulatory compliance administrator freezing for one year. So the one, the material services and supplies, this one makes me nervous. This is professional services and this is chemicals. So when you get into treating water, treating wastewater, it's so dependent upon the environment, the weather, the constituents in the water, you know. And so we are doing our best to try to figure out how to shave off of that budget. Honestly, it makes me nervous in terms of the amount that we're cutting chemicals, but I would prefer to do that than consider cutting positions. You know, when you get into Public Works and you talk about, even though they're not, going back to Mr. Suki's question in terms of, you know, why are they not considered safety? So from the budget standpoint, they're not considered safety. But in terms of the services that they provide to the public, they are considered safety. And it's extremely important to be able to have the tools and supplies to be able to do their job. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions related to Public Works.
Through the mayor.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Ms. Langley, the question I have is, you talked about in reduction of services that would be training and what like that. What is gonna be the impact if we cut back on the training? Because then all the operators have to have their certifications and every, it's training like any other department. What kind of impact is that going to have? Are we gonna still be able to maintain all their minimum requirements and training? Or are we talking about impacting that?
No, we would make sure that, that individuals are able to keep up with, on the certifications required for their job. We also try to send staff to training, maybe it's not a certification required for their job, but it's a safety training. You know, we would continue to do those. Where we would cut the training budget would be more so going to conferences. We have always encouraged staff to attend conferences because that's a great way to network. It's a great way to find out the latest technology, what's innovative within the industry. Water and wastewater, there's a lot of innovation happening all the time. And so by cutting the training budgets, it'd really be related to the ability to go to those types of conferences.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Anybody else?
Through the mayor, thank you.
Go ahead.
Diana, thank you for being so succinct. That's really good and helpful. Now, the question I have is in reference to the chemicals. So the chemicals are part of some of this reduction?
Yes, materials, chemicals fall under material services and supplies. You can imagine, we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on chemicals for treatment. But however, I will say that traditionally, if you look at the utilities budgets, we have been able to save significantly on our budgets on an annual basis. And so even though we've put forward these reduction scenarios, staff has done an excellent job in years past in trying to minimize expenditures to be able to save as much money as we can, recognizing that it goes back to the originating funds.
Okay. So we're not cutting and the health concerns within the water, we're good?
No, we feel like we could still, we could, we would still be able to operate.
Okay.
Under the 7.5% scenario, we're cutting it close. And could I sit here and guarantee you that, yes, we're going to be able to save this? No, I can't. Do I think that we could get close? In evaluating it, the supervisors did feel like they could get close with that. With this, you know, like I said, the 7.5% scenario makes me really nervous. The 5% scenario, nervous. The 2.5% scenario, okay. None of us want to be up here in front of council talking about these scenarios. And like I said, it's, we understand that it's where we're at and we need to do it. But, you know, none of these scenarios make any of us feel good or, and it will impact services. One example is going to be streets. We're not going to be able to have the extra help that goes out there and picks up the couch within two hours of a phone call. That couch might sit there for a while because we're doing a different operation that day. We're not gonna be able to do multiple operations where we have a concrete crew and we have a paving crew. Everybody might be on the concrete crew that day. And so streets is going to see the impact of this, just like the other divisions.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask you that. So, okay, I'm gonna try to be optimistic as someone else said on the dais up here, you know, that three months later, the money comes in, COVID-19 somehow taxes. My crystal ball is saying good things. No, thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Diana.
Good evening, council, again. So the community services, obviously, as someone mentioned earlier, it's the quality of life that we provide. I'm a realist, and you will see a 5% and a 7.5% because when, back in 2008, 2009, we kind of keep going back to those days as well. Community services, Parks and Recreation lost approximately 60% of their staffing at that time. We are back to about 50% now of, from that 2008, 2009. I say I'm a realist because I'm not gonna provide a 2.5% because I'm pretty confident in being in this position as long as I have been, that we are for community services. We're probably gonna start at 5% or 7.5%, and I understand that. So looking at the 5% scenario, really it comes down to what I call modifying events that you would see as far as what, what would 5% look like in community services? It is the events that we put on throughout the years, the year, and then it's reducing our extra help, materials and supplies. And of course, we keep talking about this topic, but our vehicle replacement fund, that vehicle replacement fund of $84,000, which is a very large number, is a result of extending vehicles over a long period of time, mostly in parks, and one in recreation, I believe. And so we've been able to capture that for one-time savings. Now, obviously, if we go to sustain something past fiscal year of 2021, we will have to figure out, come up with, you know, that number as well. So I guess I just want to make it clear, this is a one-time savings, as it is for most of the departments. So the 7.5%, it gets, now we're talking about a position. This is our recreation coordinator position. This was a position that was held by Kelsey Myers, who promoted and took a position in Roseville. And so this was an open position. We were literally, you know, five days from a person starting before COVID hit. So out of the few things I'm thankful for, I'm thankful for the fact that this individual did not come on. And so we've decided to freeze, or proposed to freeze that position for one year. I talked about minimal events being reduced at the 5%. The, the events would be even more minimal as relates to that, because that position put on all those events. And an additional thing that it affects is our volunteer program. Our volunteer program is specifically through the Parks and Recreation Department. It helps get volunteers for our recreation programs, for our parks, summer, summer at City Hall, that was part of the program a while ago. We've got animal services where we see a lot of volunteers. And then in addition, we also have our youth commission that this person oversaw. The youth commission would not go away, but again, there would be reduced activity in that area as well. And then the adopt a park, our Eagle Scout projects, all of that stuff that people sign up for, that was coordinated through this position as well. So you would see, you know, that, a reduction in that, obviously, as well. Materials and supplies, roughly the same. Of course, the vehicle replacement at the 80, close to $85,000. Let me just check my notes before. Yeah, that's it. Thank you. Any questions?
Through the mayor.
Go ahead.
Mr. McIntyre, just for clarification, because you refer to reduced events. We do, events mean a lot of things across the city. So from your standpoint, can you clarify what you're talking about as far as events?
Sure will. Thank you for that question. For the events, concerts in the park, movies in the park, Fourth of July, the DBA functions that the city helps support as far as the Christmas tree lighting, the parade. And then earlier, I mentioned the youth commission events. Those would be the events I was, I would be talking about.
Just to follow up on that, a couple of those, don't we have line items in our budget for, like the Christmas stroll and things of that nature? It's, I was gonna say, so we're not saying we're not going to support some of those community events, it would just be your part that you do of those?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. All right, thank you.
As it relates to the DBA, that is correct.
All right. Thank you very much, Brad.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead. I should race him.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Spencer Morrison, finance director. Material supplies and services cuts are difficult in the finance division because of impacts on compliance and needs of support departments. Our MSNS consists of items like utility bill processing, postage, audits, credit card fees, actuarial services, tax audits, cost allocation, mandatory state cost recovery, et cetera. So we're looking to salary and benefits in the finance division especially, and a mix in the IT division. Freezing the vacant accountant two position for three months and bringing some network assessments in-house will reduce costs in finance and IT by 2.5%. Freezing the vacant accountant two position for 10 months will leave our professional accounting series shorthanded, causing increased stress on senior accounting staff to compensate and complete tasks. Bringing a larger proportion of network assessments in-house will compete with customer service support, causing potential delays in resolving technical issues for all departments. Additionally, eliminating the IT extra help and overtime budgets will further slow customer service efforts and delay network security upgrades. The 7.5% scenario relies, there's, I have two options I'm gonna present. The first option relies on the willingness of retirement-eligible team member retirements, a retirement, which may be assisted by financial incentive should this council decide to go that direction. We would also reclassify our senior account clerk to account administrative analyst one to allow for a shift of duties for the accountant one staff, which helps with the loss of the accountant two for one year. We would increase overtime to help cover clerical or accounting tasks from falling further behind. It also brings more technical professional services in-house, which may require additional training for our IT team members. If the retirement incentive is not an option, the field representative furlough would result in savings of $50,400, but could still result in an increase of extra help of $23,000. We have an option two for 7.5%. The second option for a 7.5% reduction would furlough a customer service team member for one year, resulting in increased drop calls and longer lines at the front counter. And the shorthanded back office staff will be stretched too thin to cover the front counter reliably. Busy customer contact days will reduce efficient processing of other tasks such as collections, lanes, proactive customer contacts, and balancing among other daily duties. And that's what I have for you tonight. No questions? I'll turn it over to Ben.
Questions from council? All right. All right, thank you, Spencer.
Through the mayor, I just want to make a quick comment on, you're good, Spencer, you're okay, but I just want to comment on the finance department. They answer a lot of phone calls, especially when utility bills go out, and especially during shut-offs. So if we lost a couple employees to that, I couldn't imagine with that department, you know, just, it'd be very... know, just it'd be very a downfall for that department if we lose those employees, if we have to lose those employees for something like that, especially at those times of the month. Anyway, thank you.
All right, so I'm up. So good evening. So Ben Murray, your Development Services Department Director. And so, so really, as others have stated, I'm really the advocate for my department and, but also understand the need for the budget. So the budget needs and how we're going to get there. And so really, to be straightforward, the takeaway that I want to present for the Development Services Department is that we're lean. Right now, due to the, due to staffing from 2008, various recruitments over time and for various reasons, we are lean. The department is basically about $1.5 million, about 3% of that general fund budget. We're in charge of building, planning, housing, and code enforcement. And so with that, right now, this, this past fiscal year, or this fiscal year, we're looking at about $1.3 million plus in revenue for the billing permit side, plus valuation of about $73 million that goes towards assessed value that brings in additional property taxes to the city. And then also with that, we administer housing funds that come through from state and federal agencies. And so right now, I'm running about one full-time employee for each required position. And so really, I'm right on the edge right now that if I have one inspector, which we're basically, we're requesting a freeze through this scenario with it being a redundancy, but it's really leaving us vulnerable that with that, with the current one inspector that's running, if he drops off, or if we have a retirement, or a health reason, or any sort of vacancy, we run into an issue where we're going to have to consult out for a higher cost at a reduced service. And so really, that's, that's my takeaway. It's tough, just like the other departments have said. All these cuts are tough, but we'll get through them. It's just that long-term, it's not a long-term solution where we're not, where it's not going to have impacts to cost inefficiencies and service. And so, so with that, right now, we have a vacant position with the billing inspector. One, with the economy booming before the COVID-19, it was really hard to recruit. We did a, we did a temp transfer from an internal employee transfer with some interest, but with the COVID-19 and the limits on, on that, that transfer, we're proposing to leave it vacant until, we'll see how this, this comes and plays out. The 7.5% scenario, that also utilizes a current vacancy through the planning manager position, where we're basically, I'm basically proposing to underfill it with an assistant planner and then build them up over time. And so, but with that, there, it's not a straight savings from a planning manager to an assistant planner, that those savings from the $160,000 cost for a planning manager versus a $80,000 cost to assistant planner, I'm going to have to use some of that savings to pay for consultant services to rely on, you know, more of a senior-level staff for environmental analysis and some technical studies. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. It's pretty straightforward for my department.
Through the mayor. Ben, I think we clearly, at least in my opinion, I clearly know that your department is very lean, and since you stepped in, you have brought, you're bringing us up to speed in areas that we have been, as a city, far behind and haven't in the quality of this service, what you're doing. I'm very impressed and understand these decisions are not taken lightly. These are very challenging decisions. And knowing how hard you've been working with your team to, to bring up that level of customer service, all of these projects, development, I mean, the, the list goes on and on. And I recognize that, and I just wanted to say that to you. So thank you.
I appreciate it, and my team appreciates it, and we'll continue working with the city departments as a whole to keep moving forward.
Now, Ben, it looks like here on the graph here that you did the same thing that Mr. McIntyre did. You just jumped right to five?
I did. And so with the, with the department being so relatively small compared to the dollar amounts for police, fire, and public works, with that current vacancy, that really gets me right to the 5% right now.
Just confirming that. Thank you very much. Appreciate the effort and all the work you folks do. Terrell.
Evening, Mayor and Council. So I did things a little bit different, as I just skipped the 5% and pretty much, and just kind of went from the 2.5%. So administration, I more or less consider, it's kind of all in together, but it's four separate budgets. You have, and the city council budget, city manager budget, city clerk budget, economic, I guess it's five, economic development, and the non-departmental, except for the travel expenses. And so putting it together, we have a, it's, it's in the budget for an administrative intern. It's an extra help, part-time position. We haven't filled it in a couple years, so it's, it's no big deal to freeze that. It's not painful at all. Again, we are benefiting from Diana Langley, serving as our interim city manager, because that gives us a large budget savings from the regular city manager pay to the public works department director pay. And then my position, as I am retiring, will freeze for three to six months, depending on when the next person will be in. And then the designation position was added last year, and we never did fill it, and we're proposing to leave it frozen again for another year. And then the city clerk's office had an administrative clerk part-time. We're recommending to freeze that again. I was able to use it with two different people last year. It is kind of hard to fill a part-time position with no benefits, but the two people that we did have for a couple of months each really did a good job, but that can be frozen as well. Material services and supplies. So, so most of our departments, it's office supplies and salaries that are hard to do. The other, the other thing that we have are consultant services, which are very much council's direction and the city manager's direction of how they want to move it forward. And so unlike some departments, it's not like we're going to have to cut things. What is, is things aren't going to be proactive, going for things with consultant services. And so proposing to, most of the reductions are coming from the economic development department. So for the 2.5% material services and supplies, recommending deleting the, so that's 5%. So from economic development, reducing the advertising budget, which is used for promoting the city by, and the meetings that occur, except for keeping a little bit for the boards and for the building and developer meetings that Diana and Ben are having with our local developers. The digital front door team, reducing that. That was a, that's an internal team meeting that we have a representative from every department that attends, and they look for innovative items to communicate with our citizens better. And there's a small budget in there and that they can buy a program or chest it out or something to be able to use. And the big one in there is, is not included in here because it's already, council's already considering it, and what they want to do with it is the tourism budget that's added to the economic development. The 5% scenario, again, it's the same salary and benefit savings, but we're going to be adding some professional services from economic development. The economic development and professional services contains things like the consultant that you're using for the master tax exchange agreement, and I think there's two that we've been using. And then some possible money for, since we don't have an in-house economic, if you guys want to use some consultant services for that. So keeping some of that money available for you. Then I also have, every other year, the city clerk's office pays for either the boards and commissions dinner, or, and then the odd year, we pay for the mandatory AB 123 ethics training. However, that can be done online. It's, it's a lot harder to get compliance when they have to do it on their own online, but that's an option too, and that's about $2,000. under non-departmental, that's the item that Councilmember Shaw was asking about. So the sister city has said that they are not going to be coming this October, and we're not going to be invited to go back in February because of the COVID. So that cost is being reduced. The downtown business association counseled their summer stroll, so I took that money out as a reduction. Then the city staff mans a booth at the Yubuseter Fair, and there's some money for that that I took out because I don't know whether we'll be doing that or not. And then we took some money for the Fly the Mission Academy. Council had already decided through the city manager that that wasn't going to occur this fall. So also taking out, so also taking out costs for replacing banners on Bridge Street. And, and then if the restrictions aren't lifted, then, then the cost for sponsoring the winter stroll. So the other costs for the organizations, for the community contributions and the events, I left those in there because that's up to council's discretion, what they wanted to fund or not. So we were accepting applications right when COVID hit, so we did get several, and those can be provided to if you want to know. So the 7.5% just kind of keeps moving on with reducing the professional service accounts for whatever council wants to be able to do, if you need a consultant for some of the projects like the Bog Stewart Master Plan, or in-house, since we don't have economic development department, in-house development, economic development services. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Terrell. Looks like you did a pretty deep dive in there. I guess the question is, in looking at the proposed budget, not the, not the reductions for city council, I noticed there were some significant increases in professional services and such. When you looked at, at administration, did you look at city council and, and pare back from ours? I think we need to lead by example.
I did. I'm not sure why you didn't see that, but that was part of the information that I had forwarded to Diana. And so, so we did increase, I just moved money.
I haven't received any, just, sorry to interrupt.
You haven't received it?
She hasn't forwarded me anything yet. I think she's still compiling information, so.
I will say that the reductions for the city council is in the staff report. There's a, there's a page in the staff report that's specific to the reductions that's being proposed for the city council budget.
Okay. So that's not reflected up here, though?
It's part of it, yes. So I, I just missed that part. So as far as the 2.5% scenario, I'm suggesting for city council budget, $700 for the forms and supplies, and that was just kind of like reducing costs of frames and certificates that we spend on events, like honoring a grand opening or. So we also moved over $30,000 from the non-departmental budget for travel, council travel. So you got, so the council can monitor their own expenses a lot easier than when it was lumped in with everybody else. And I was proposing to reduce that by $25,000, leaving $5,000 for miscellaneous stuff that needs to be done. And plus, also, you are having probably a new mayor next year, and so there's the League of California Cities New Mayor Conference that might be wanting to attend. And I'm also proposing deleting the council closed session meals. And then for the 7% scenario, for council, traditionally, we have a professional facilitator come in for doing the priority and goal-setting session for the city council and executive team, and all the processes that go along with that. And we usually budget about $12,000 for that, and another $1,000 for the venue and, and supplies. And that's part of the 7.5% reduction scenario that I'm proposing. So the reason that it's in the 7.5% and not getting rid of altogether is because you are planning on hiring a new city manager, and there is an election year coming up, and so the dynamics of the council could change. And so it might be important for next spring, or, you know, January, February, to be able to regroup and talk with your new city manager, hopefully, for Diana. So having that in place and not deleting it yet, I think is, is a good recommendation.
Thank you. I appreciate you taking the effort to do that. Like I said, I think it's important for us to, to feel some of the burden of the reduction. So I appreciate what you did. Thank you.
Do you have something? Terrell, one question. If you could go back to, I think you're 2.5%? Oh, actually, it's still there. On the interim city manager savings, we have six months there. I know that it was on public works reduction scenario as well. I just want to confirm that we're not double counting, if you can maybe elaborate that.
No, I moved Diana's salary for the six months over to the city manager's office, and I deducted the prior city manager's pay that was budgeted.
Altogether, okay. All right, thank you.
There's a good difference.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Good evening again. Last but not least, human resources. So we have, all of our scenarios are surrounding material supplies and services. So as you know, HR is primarily an internal service provider, and many of the proposed reductions are from accounts that are impacted by city recruitments. And so those are advertising, testing, employment physicals, site testing, travel, meeting, and interview panels. So that's all having, that travel and meeting is all associated with interview panels. And then also onboarding. And so as you move up in the scenarios, there's more money that is reduced from those budgets. What does get added to it as you go up to the 7, or 5%, excuse me, is employee awards. So during the recession, the last recession, we, you know, reduced the employee awards just to a simple ceremony, recognition ceremony that was held in the council chambers and did away with the formal employee awards. And then we also start reducing at the 5% level, training programs and aides, which is, and then also the safety program as we get into the 7.5. And that, the program was built, that safety, or the training program and aides was a program that was built by employees within the city. It was called Target Learning, and it provided training for all employees, and it offered training. So I am recommending that to be reduced, as well as some safety training. And the reason for that is that just due to social distancing, train, providing training at this time, it just, it just, it seems like a large hurdle for us. So you will see, and many of you know that I do have a vacant, a human resources tech. The reason why I'm not putting it on there is normally during these times, and we see a lot of increases in, you know, time spent on labor relations and personnel matters. And so we already, prior to this COVID-19, we needed that position to help with just regular reporting requirements that human resources is responsible for. When we do see a recession or any type of economic downturn, we see things shift in human resources towards more personnel matters and also more employee relations issues. So that is my presentation. Thank you. Any questions?
Nope. We'll have an opportunity to dig down deeper, I'm sure, but thank you for the report. And.
So I'm just going to wrap it up here.
Yeah.
All right. So for summary, projecting a $3.5 million shortfall for fiscal year 2021, options available. Options available are any combination of discretionary funds, department budget reductions, or bargaining unit discussions. In terms of implementation, we're recommending that council approach this with a strategy of implement, monitor, and reassess. Have the finance director provide quarterly budget updates. Select options to implement July 1st, monitor over the next three months, and then reassess to determine if additional measures are needed and really balance cutting too much too soon versus too little too late. Next steps, we have a special council workshop scheduled for next Tuesday at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers. It will be a virtual meeting again. And then hoping to get direction from council at that point in time so we can adopt a budget on June 16th. However, if council needs additional time, we still have a couple of weeks within the month of June to adopt the budget. And so, you know, willing to take as much time as we need to vet council's questions and assist with making decisions in terms of how to address this shortfall. And with that, that concludes the presentations.
All right. Anything? Nothing. Any public comment by chance?
No more than what you've already done.
Grace, did you have something? I saw you reaching for the red button.
You're watching me, Mayor. I'm just impressed by the work, the effort in this, in providing us the amount of detail, information, and conversation. So I'm grateful for all of you and how you've stepped up to give us the amount of options. And the decisions, as I said earlier, are not going to be easy. It's going to be challenging. It's going to be difficult. But I feel as those decisions are played out, it's because we had a collaborative conversation. We hope that within your teams, you have that discussion with your teams and be able to find some challenges in this. And then I'm hoping that, and challenges with options, but I'm hoping that looking at the three-month quarterly review, as some of that recommendation is, yes, we may be looking at two, cutting, or reductions, or whatever we're looking at. It is a balancing act, but I think that if we end up having more funds than we anticipated, that's a good, that's a good problem to have instead of having to cut or reduce more. So thank you, and tremendous amount of work that is not overlooked and utilized in everything that I do. So thank you.
Can I go?
Yeah.
Just real quick, Diana, when you, just for clarification on what you had envisioned, I concur with the incremental approach based on how this evolves. But when we talk about implement, monitor, and reassess, do you mean by that, start out with a 3.5 and then see where we go, up or down from there? Or even maybe partial? Or is it, what did you have in mind? Or are you even comfortable answering that? Kind of curious to know what you're-
Well, I'll tell you what my personal thought was. In terms of this, is to not implement right away at the 3.5 million just because the numbers are so squishy right now.
Right.
And to, you know, proceed forward with something that council's comfortable with. And then, like I said, to be able to monitor that over the next three months and see where it's looking like it's going to land. The one thing that I would, would be difficult to do is to come in and make massive cuts and then find out that the economy's recovered. And that's a good thing to do, but then you look at the scenarios and the impacts to the departments and to the staff, it's significant. The other thing that, you know, we just have to also keep in mind is the meet and confer requirements.
Right. Okay. Sarah, did you have something? Thank you.
Yeah, kind of following up on that, you know, I need to make sure I messaged this correctly. I know there's a lot of apprehension out there amongst the folks that call themselves Yuba City employees. And there's a lot of concern about, you know, their positions or what's going to happen and the good service that they all provide. And I think it's important to note that as we sit here and consider making decisions, I want to try to at least message to those folks how much we do value them. And that I think that we want to do what's right for the city, but also what's right for them. And know that their work here is very valued and that if there's a way where we can continue to move forward and move cautiously, I think that's an appropriate way to do it rather than just go to, you know, using the machete right now. Let's see how things play out a little bit. So I would, I would support your personal opinion of let's move slowly but surely, but also realize that there's been a lot of work here since 2008 to get things right and that there's not a lot, there's not a lot of meat on the bone here. And when we start talking about some of these cuts, it's cuts to services that our citizens have come to rely on and that they need. I don't think there's a lot of fluff here. I know some may disagree with me out there in the audience, but as one who has, who's been through this and one who's looking at this from both the inside and the outside, I would echo the words of appreciate the department heads and their staff's willingness to take a hard look at what's out there and come up with scenarios that would help us. And I'm looking forward to the employee groups, as Councilman Shaw has mentioned on several occasions, you know, continuing to provide their input as well because they are, they are partners and they do have a stake in this as well. So, thanks.
I completely agree. I know that when we talk about no meat left on the bone, that's by design because that's what we expect people to do, is to be as efficient as possible with the money that we have. And so that creates challenges now for sure because we're already kind of there. And so we will see what happens. I also concur that it's very important to get our units, our labor units, involved early in part of the process and let them feel welcome and heard because it's exactly what they are. So we're looking forward to that. Hopefully have some good discussions with them. Did you, more thing? Nothing? All right.
Through the mayor.
Oh, here we go.
To the right.
Yes, sir.
It's already been said multiple times, but, you know, what we're faced with is something that this city hasn't probably ever seen with a pandemic that just totally stops the revenue stream, more or less. And over the next several months, really the next year, we've probably got some of the hardest decisions facing us that any council setting up here has been through before with so many things facing us with so many unknowns. Saying that, I want to convey to everyone out there that this isn't just numbers. Even though I'm a numbers guy and I'm already starting to look at things here, it's not just the numbers because I can run finances all day long. But at the end of the day, what I see when I look at all these numbers is I see over 300 families that work for the city of Yuba City. I also see about 69,000 residents that call Yuba City home. And it gets back to what the vice mayor had said. It deals with trying to come up with solutions, taking care of the people that are employed by the city and the quality of life here. So ladies and gentlemen, we've got a lot of work ahead of us. But know that we will go through this together, and it's not just about we're going to fight over one penny and we're going to do this or that. We really do care. I realize the impact this has. And we're going to have to take an eased-in approach, just like you said. The, you know, act, reevaluate, implement. Those are things I do every day in the financial world. We're always looking at the market, trying to figure out, okay, how do you adjust here? How do you adjust there? You have to be nimble, and that's what we're going to have to be over the next 12 months because September is going to be key. Next March and April is going to be key because all the provisions has been there through this. Those are our timelines. But saying all that, I'm actually quite optimistic. As I've talked with different people, I think getting to September is hopefully not going to be as bad as we're, you know, being told because I'm talking to retail businesses, restaurants. They're seeing it come back strong. They're seeing, you know, the places being full, people are back out. I think people's had cabin fever. They got the stimulus checks. They don't care if they're buying a plant at one of the stores. They want to get out of the house. They want to do something. So we're starting to see the economic engine start to flow. I know we're an ag-based community. We're not tourism-based. And I know ag has been strong, and ag has continued to go on through this. So I'm really optimistic where we're going forward. But just please know that at the end of the day, we're looking at numbers, but those numbers represent 300 families that work for the city and 69,000 people that call Yuba City home. Through the mayor, just a suggestion because Diana said, do it lightly. And we've got another week, and there'd be a few departments that really don't have to do a thing. Maybe have them give us a 1.5% scenario. And just to see, just give us a high and low here and something that they can get by and see if it's, you know, they'll be able to keep staffing and just maybe reduce their supplies or something. But you, she said, don't take a big leap. Let's tread lightly. Maybe they can give us a 1.5% scenario for next week?
Yeah, we have the 2.5 in place, taking a mere 1% away from that. The time that would take, I think the department heads, once we give direction of a certain dollar amount, they can have the exercise of discretion, come up with our plan. We don't necessarily have to have that in writing. But that, hopefully, that will be the case.
Okay.
Right?
I'm hoping so.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
But thank you for the suggestion. I appreciate that. Does that make sense to you, him?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to, I already asked for public comment? I did?
Will you breathe? No more.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item number 11, Fourth of July Children's Parade and Bye County Fireworks Show.
Yes?
Want me to go ahead?
Yes, please.
Okay. At my request, and the consent of the rest of the council, asked for us to begin the discussions on Fourth of July, the fireworks show and the Fourth of July Children's Parade. I also have asked that Brad McIntyre also help me with the portion on the children's parade. So I'm going to deal with that one first. I participated in a conference call with, actually Zoom meeting, with Dr. Liu, the Bye County Public Health Director, Robert Bendorf, the Yuba County Administrative Officer, and Steve Smith, the Sutter County Administrative Officer, where I raised the issue of our children's parade, historic Fourth of July Children's Parade and the Bye County Fireworks Show. At this particular time, Dr. Liu was not in favor of us hosting a Fourth of July Children's Parade. The reason being is that it's the congregation of people. So if you, if you know how this parade works, we had folks walk down Plumas Street. They end up down in the town center. They listen to a band. We provide them with some food. Everybody hangs around and socializes, and then they go home. I know that Brad's on the Compliance Committee, and so I've also sought some input from him in regards to, okay, what's he hearing on his side? I also asked him, okay, what would be a drop dead date? Because it does seem as if, as time goes on, things are being more and more relaxed in relationship to the good work that the community's doing about staying healthy. So perhaps a few words, Brad, just on, on your thoughts so far on the parade, knowing that at least right now, it's a no-go, but it's a possibility that it could continue.
So I see two scenarios playing out. If Dr. Liu releases, or loosens up the order, if you will, depending on what that number is, we could potentially facilitate a parade starting at the north end of Plumas and heading to town center. One of the things that staff would do right off the get-go is to, even if it increases by, let's just say 50, if that happens to be the number from Dr. Liu, is that we would make sure that we separated the children's parade with a lot of volunteers. We would look at starting again at the north end of Plumas Street, probably extending it out and slowly releasing the kids spread out, obviously. You mentioned serving food at the end of the event. We would certainly recommend probably not serving any food. But if, if the Yuba Center Symphony would oblige, we would hopefully have them being able to play some music as the families came into the town center area. We'd also ask and talk to Chief Alexander earlier today. He believes that his staff can facilitate a couple, a fire engine, the ladder engine, I believe, is called, and with the large flag. So it would look a little different, but I certainly think it would facilitate bringing our community together on Independence Day.
And I may have missed it, but we're looking at a no right now. But if we got an okay by the 16th of June, then we could potentially reconsider. So obviously, it would be a good thing to try to have in the community. I think the community's ready for these types of community events. But we also respect the work and the knowledge and the advice of our Bye County Public Health Director, Dr. Liu, and would not go against her directive.
Yeah, I apologize for missing that question. So yeah, so the middle of June, now, right now, currently, as I speak, our recreation supervisors are not working. However, if the numbers loosen up, and let's say it is that I can, I have the ability to bring them back on, let's say, the third week of June, all my recreation supervisors are very experienced. They've all participated in this or ran it themselves. So we'd be able to pull it off fairly quickly with those supervisors.
Thanks. Any questions on the Fourth of July Parade for myself or Brad? Awesome. Okay. Thanks, Brad. On the Bye County Fireworks Show, a little more encouraging. The conversation with Dr. Liu, again, County Administrator Bendorf and Smith, was positive. They, initially this year, the second year that we've brought this back, there was a plan to bring some, bring more events down into Riverfront Park, some music, et cetera. That cannot happen. Again, it's from the congregation issues that Dr. Liu is considerate of. So right now, the shooting of the fireworks would occur from the same location as they were last year. But there would not be access at this time anyway, unless things, again, get relaxed. There would be no access into Riverfront Park. The height of the fireworks is sufficient enough that most folks from both sides of the river can view them. And at this particular point in time, two things. Number one is I'm asking for the council to consider continuing on with the program and the amount budgeted to fund the fireworks. Our participation in that was in the amount of $5,000. I know that Marysville is in support of this. I'm still trying to figure out if Sutter County is. I don't know. I reached out today and I didn't get a phone call back. I do know that there are a couple of private agencies that are interested in producing the show as well, as well as the Yuba County Water Agency has indicated interest and support. So first and foremost is it looks like we are going to have a fireworks show. There will not be a congregation of folks down inside Riverfront Park unless Dr. Liu changes that recommendation. But as far as being able to see them in Yuba City, see them in Marysville, Lynn to Olivehurst, et cetera, they will. You would be able to see those fireworks. It is our intent to not open Feather River Parkway, so that Parkway would still remain closed. There's probably a few details to work out with Chief Landon just so that he's aware that, you know, there's going to be people looking at the fireworks. But as far as the show itself, it can go on. I believe it will go on, but we also need support of the council for the, our portion of the allocation for the cost of the show.
All right. Thank you very much. Any public comment on the item?
None received.
None received. All right.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just an idea, as this came up last council meeting, and I've been thinking about this. Just an idea, as this came up last council meeting, and I've been thinking about this. Ms. Locke, you mentioned that we held back the funds from the DBA because the June summer stroll was canceled, and that was approximately 7,500, correct?
So the way that the summer stroll and the winter stroll work is that the summer stroll funds are sent to them at the end of the fiscal year, and the winter stroll is sent to them, you know, before, so the summer stroll will be paid for, we already kind of paid for it, and so they kind of have a credit now.
Okay, so we paid for the summer stroll basically?
It was sent to them about right before the COVID hit.
Okay, so there's no savings in that, because my idea was going to be, since it was canceled, just divert that to the show, because it benefits the entire community, including the downtown, but we don't have that available still.
You could look at it so that we prepaid for the winter stroll, so.
Just an idea, I was just trying to figure out where we might come up with the 5,000 from.
Okay, so it's us that have the credit?
Yes.
Okay.
We have the credit.
I thought I heard you say they have a credit, but okay, that makes sense now.
Terrell, don't we have money budgeted for the fireworks show?
Yes, we do.
It is, we pay for it as of July 1st, and Marysville didn't have a problem with us paying for it July 1st.
No.
No, we paid for it July 1st last year, and we're always working with them, because it's a.
Here's the update, they would, the fireworks people are looking for payment sometime this week, and it was my understanding that we had $5,000 for this in this year's budget already, so all, I think what I'm looking for is if that's the case, can we just go ahead and make that budgeted purchase?
Is that?
Terrell, whatever you're hearing you say, is that the $5,000 that was budgeted for this fiscal year was paid last July 1st?
Right, because July happens for fiscal year 2021, so we paid for the July 2019 fireworks show in July 2019.
Oh, within, is that one of the non-departmental budget items?
Yes, it is.
So there's still money within the non-departmental budget, if council wanted to allocate 5,000 of that towards this event?
Right, you don't have to, I mean, as far as what was allocated right then, but there's money available that you can use.
Okay, so are we properly agendaized to approve something like that right now?
I think you can spend $5,000.
Probably so, yeah.
Without council?
Up to 50, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, without our approval, but if we're going to vote on something.
I just think it's a consensus thing.
Oh, yeah, well, if we're taking a poll, then instead of a vote, that's fine, yeah.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yes, you are allowed to take some sort of action this evening, you're not allowed to, at least where you are right now, to approve the budget, but if you wanted to, move a budget item is what I'm saying, but if you wanted to discuss and provide directions, making funding available for the Fourth of July events, you can do that.
Okay, would that be by vote, Shannon, or just is consensus fine, considering how we have it?
Either will work.
Either one, all right. Any other input from the public? Natalie, anybody? All right, well, I certainly don't have a problem with it, there's one vote, I don't think we, I think we have.
Yeah, I move that we.
Got a consensus.
I move that we pay $5,000 for the fireworks.
You'll move it, I'll second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, there you go.
I think one last thing on that is, again, one of the emphasis of having the fireworks show is not only as a community event that I think is sorely needed right now, but I do believe that it does contribute to the lessening of illegal fireworks, especially if we can get the message out early that they can watch these legal aerial fireworks instead of getting all this other pyrotechnic stuff. So hopefully that takes a little burden off of you, chief, both chiefs as well.
I certainly hope so, Vice Mayor, because around my neighborhood, that's just a, that's, I mean, there was fireworks the other day, as a matter of fact, so I don't know how that's happening already.
It's almost July.
All right, well, there you go. That being said and agreed upon, thank you very much, Shannon. Going on to, let's see, our public comment. Reports and communications, beginning with Councilmember Cardozo.
Thank you, mayor. For chamber events, it's been pretty quiet for social gatherings, I know the chamber's working with EDC, and they're having virtual workshops, helping the community restart their business, helping them get through the application process of getting money, and reopening, reopening their businesses. I believe there was a government board meeting this morning, I'll let Vice Mayor talk about that when his time comes up.
I wasn't able to attend.
Oh, okay, well, I didn't either, so Diana, would you like to speak on it while I'm here?
The mayor attended, or I can cover it.
Okay, mayor, would you like to speak on it then when the time comes? Thank you, I didn't know you were there, I thought Vice Mayor was there.
I'm going to be honest, I was texting, didn't listen to you. I don't know what you said.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyway, so we're going to kick over to meetings.
Straight up, wasn't listening, sorry.
When his time comes up, we'll let him speak on that. I attended the Regional Housing Authority meeting, and I was elected the new chair, board member for 2021, yes, I am the leader of the, huh? They all liked me, they voted for me. Anyway, we had a great year last year, we got a lot of things going, there is a lot of apartment complexes, housing being built, the Regional Housing Authority throughout our communities, they're, I see today I drove by, we have the water line on our project on Miles Way and Garden Highway, and I see they got the foundations dug up, so we're moving there, hopefully their goal is for the summer of 2021 to be finished with it. Attended the Yuba Sutter Transit Authority meeting, update on that, the Yuba College-Sutter County Center Shuttle has been suspended for the summer of 2020, I attended the, I just want to let everybody know about that, the Feather River, I attended the Feather River Air Quality District meeting, and I was also on the Financial Budget Committee, and yesterday we passed our budget for the Feather River Air Quality for 2021, attended the Planning Commission meeting last week, and of course, we had our budget meetings, we've been attended every week here at council, for community and city events. I'm going to start off, we celebrated tonight with Mr. Fuller, attended council, and myself attended Mr. Fuller's retirement luncheon yesterday, want to thank you again for 42 years of dedicated service, Bill. I was down at the wastewater treatment facility, I, we had some donuts, and I wanted to congratulate and wish happy retirement to Dan Poe, our chief plant operator, and Pat Pos, how's that pronounced, please? Posmas, she's our lab technician, 18 years of service to the city of Yuba City, happy retirement to those folks. Attended the free mass giveaway sponsored by Matt Conick, our fifth district supervisor, and helped collect donations for Back to Badge, he had a pretty good turnout that afternoon, got some money for Back to Badge. Monday, Memorial Day, Councilman Shaw and myself, we attended the Freedoms Heroes Memorial Ceremony, the Calvary Christian Center, the guest speaker was Dave Roever, he's a Vietnam veteran, pardon? Oh, Reaver, thank you. And I want to thank Pastor Michael C.O.C. Loa, see if I got that right for the invitation, that's always a wonderful presentation, a little warm that day, but we made it through it. Attended the farmers' markets, both the Wednesday night at the museum and the Saturday morning at our town fountain, there, lots of folks are going to both those, they've had great turnouts, the vendors are having a good time, it's a great thing for our community, so that's on Wednesday nights from 4:00 to 7:00 at our museum, and then, of course, Saturdays at the fountain from 8:00 to noon. I attended the Sikh temple at Interwina, the essential food package offering for the general public, they passed out 40, per person, 40 pounds of food per person, that was this Saturday and Sunday, and then also, I attended with Councilmember Shaw, the Yuba Sutter Celebrating Seniors Class of 2020 at Kmart parking lot, and that was hosted by Adventure Church of Yuba City, and I'd also like to thank Pastor Greg Mansour for that, and that's it for me, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Espandola.
Thank you, mayor, well, congratulations, Councilman Cardozo, for the chairman of the housing, I think that's, you've put in a lot of time and work into that, so congratulations for getting that nomination and approval. I would like a recount on the votes, please, just good humor between you and I, thank you. I want to, I know that most of the people in the audience are executive team, but I don't know if anyone else is watching and our council is here, and I just wanted to talk about a couple of items that have been really weighing heavily, heavy, I'm already getting choked up because it's issues that are close to me and close to many people, and I've been thinking a lot about this and how people have called, and, because I don't necessarily go out as much still yet, because I have family that are very vulnerable, and I want to keep them safe, and so, two things that we're still continuing to face, and that is COVID-19 and racism. COVID-19 has impacted our community, and it's, we've taken every single measure that I know to protect our community, and we still continue to do this. There has been so many negative effects because of COVID-19, people have lost their lives, people are stressed, people have lost jobs, people have lost businesses, and now this virus of racism is in full display. Systemic racism is not new, injustice is not new, we are hurting, the pain is real, the wounds are deep from the virus of racism, the reality is that the difference between these two, one could have been prevented, and COVID-19 is a new, a new virus with so many unknowns. The murder of George Floyd at the knee and hands of four Minneapolis officers, as I watched the video, it was horrifying, it was gut-wrenching. Where is our humanity? The wounds run deep in pain and sorrow and anger, people are protesting because we need change, people need the scales of justice, we need fair distribution of law, with no influence of biases, privilege, or corruption, peaceful demonstrations are an avenue to change. I have protested in peaceful demonstrations in the past because it's my constitutional right, and it's yours too. I stood up, I spoke up, I marched for justice, for equality, for democracy, and for human rights, and I will continue to do so. I say to the protesters, protest in peace, march in peace and love, and rise up always for the scales of justice. Do not let opportunists take this moment, they are the criminals, what they are doing is wrong and it needs to stop. Peaceful demonstrations can bring change, change is possible, we need to improve the scales of justice, we need leaders in church, in temple, in education, in business, in elected officials, in community, we are at a tipping point, and I'm here to help in any way I can to help improve the scales of justice. I end my thoughts in the memory and prayers of Mr. George Floyd and countless others who deserved better, his and their families deserve justice, as Dr. Martin Luther King said, "And justice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, following up on that, there's a lot of things in the world that go wrong, and at the end of the day, my personal opinion is there's good people and there's bad people, and that's really what it boils down, we're all people, and I just want to extend a thank you, chief, to you and your department, you guys have been beyond reproach for as long as I've been here, and thank you for having the standards that you guys do, and please convey that to all your officers, I know they're doing a hell of a job, so, and thank you, and thank you for the statement you guys put out, well noted, and I know where you guys stand, and I'm honored to serve you guys, so, thank you. This past couple of weeks, not much going on as far as meetings, two events that I attended was the one that Councilmember Cardozo referred to, which was A Grateful Nation Remembered, and that's held out at Calvary Temple, and Pastor C. did a fabulous job, Dave Reaver, if you know anything about this man, he is absolutely incredible, back during, I believe it was Vietnam, he had a grenade in his hand that went off in his hand, blew half his face off, and he, to this day, carries the weight of a one-star general on contract with the Department of Defense, and goes and visits our servicemen and women, and helps them recover, because they suffer from PTSD and other things, and just an incredible man, so kudos to Pastor C. and the entire group out there, thank you for letting us be a part. The second one's Pastor Greg and Adventure, they came to myself and several others at the community a few weeks ago, wanted to do something for the seniors, and my wife and I were honored to be one of the sponsors, and so that's why we were invited to be there, and we got to bump fist with probably about 400 kids that day, and really appreciate all the others that came on board, Adventist really stepped up huge, so a big shout out to those guys, because with everything going on in the world right now, there's the class of 2020 that's kind of getting lost, and at least we were able to do something just a few days ago to help them, let them know that we think about them, we wanted to make them feel honored, and to the whole crew, to Adventure, PG and those guys, thank you so much for what you did. I've got meetings coming up this week, we will be transit or WMA, we will be starting back up our Development Impact Fee Committee later this month, taking the next step, hopefully we're going to get starting to get more traction with the BOKs toward Master Tax Agreement, because that's been stelmaided, in my opinion, far too long, and we need to get that moving, because that will be the catalyst that will help us address the things we talked about earlier with the Walton District, so looking forward to that, so not much to report, but that's it, Mr. Mayor, back to you.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As far as city meetings, really, a lot of closed sessions in regards to the budget, kudos to staff for the volumes of information that they've provided to us in regards to not only their proposed budget, but some of the reductions, and I know there's some questions I've placed out there, and I'm looking forward to getting the answers on those as well. As I referenced earlier, having the meetings with Dr. Lou, and Robert Bendorf, and Steve Smith, and Rachel Downs, extremely accommodating, very willing to listen, and we'll continue to have those in regards to some other events. I know we have a bridge opening in July that we're probably going to need to get some clarification on as far as what we can do for ceremonies for that as well. I do, I do want to acknowledge the Yuba City Police Department, I know that over the last week, they have been faced with a lot of different rumors about events, and I know that they have actually, in a conversation with the chief, I know that, you know, the personal relationships that our officers, including that, you know, the personal relationships that our officers, including Chief Landon, have with individuals within the community, I think, have gone a long way towards making sure that anything that's done in the way of vigils or remembrances, I like to try to get away from protests. I like to think more along the lines of, you know, just moving forward and having peaceful opportunities to express the rights of folks and their voices. I know that there's a few things that continue to pop up. I'm aware of an unfortunate incident up in Reading that we've all been made aware of, and to chief, to your folks there at the police department, incredible amount of pressure, I think, to perform, especially as you look across the nation and you see what law enforcement and the National Guard is being faced with in regards to what's happening, you know, in the way of violence. My thoughts are with your guys and cows every day, just hoping like heck something like that doesn't come around here or to our region. And I have utmost respect for law enforcement right now. I also have the utmost respect for those who are choosing to peacefully protest. They have every right to do so, and I have a lot of dismay and anger towards those who are taking advantage of a situation to do other things. Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, and you may have had this on your list already, I would like to you to consider adjourned the meeting tonight in the memory of Bob Gallagher, Robert Gallagher, Assemblyman Gallagher's grandfather. He was a county supervisor here in Sutter County, and just one of those folks who served his community, and unfortunately, he passed here a week or so ago. And our thoughts to his grandson, James Gallagher, who's been a tremendous advocate for the city of Yuba City. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. I did miss that. I have another one here. I appreciate that. I don't have a lot of activity the last couple of weeks, city-related, but I do want to piggyback on what you just said, vice mayor, and what we've all said, and this appreciation for our police department. Chief, your folks are stepping up. I happen to know from experience, it's a 24/7 operation, and you go off so many rumors, and which ones do you choose to follow up on, which ones do you don't? And it's a constant, probably a mini-command post over there right now, just keeping track of social media alone, and it's a lot of work. Your folks are really stepping up, and, you know, when that happens nationwide, and it's a very, very, of course, unfortunate, I'm not going to get into all the dynamics of how we got here in the first place, other than it's tragic, and to respond the way you do in our community, we never really had people go off the rails like we see all around us. And a lot of that's not only because our community is full of good people, but your response and your presence and your ability to keep on top of things and curtail things. And so, I really appreciate that, and hopefully, this will be another example of exactly that, but I know you're ready if some folks decide to go off the rails. And here's to you folks, and please stay safe out there. Appreciate everything you do. Down at SACOG meetings, a lot of it is COVID, everything, the uncertainty, financial uncertainty, projects that are in place and in place in jeopardy, and so conversations primarily circling around that. We are moving forward incrementally, but we're moving forward and deciding on voting for the funding round that I've mentioned, the formula that we use to base who gets how much money. Also, the transportation, I'm on the Transportation Committee for SACOG that is yet to meet this month. The same thing with Community Services Subcommittee for League of California Cities yet to meet this month. Both, actually, all three are meeting virtually. Also had a virtual meeting, well, everything is pretty much virtual. Yuba Sutter Arts, they're still doing the best they can, given our situation with COVID-19, to stay active and adapt, and I think every day that goes by, there's an example of those folks really thinking outside the box and doing what they can to keep our culture active. With times like this and these one, now two tragedies that we're dealing with that are quite serious and will have lasting impacts, they add a little spark of hope and something, a little bit of variance, and I appreciate the work they do, and thank you for joining on the meeting for a while. Councilmember Cardozo mentioned the chambers meeting this morning that was primarily consisted of everybody updating everybody else on their status and their challenges that they're facing in the business world. We did have a pretty good, I thought it was pretty good presentation, a pretty good detailed presentation from a gentleman, I don't call his name, on the Sutter Point development down in South Sutter County. It was quite interesting, if everything comes together for that, how that will come into, come to pass. So, we appreciate learning that. Other than that, we are, we're all staying busy. I'm glad to hear the fireworks is going. Hopefully, things will continue to do well so we can get the 4th of July parade going too. It's, in my opinion, 4th of July is the best holiday, so everything we can do is better for that. I do, I am going, I appreciate the suggestion, Mark, about closing memory of Robert Gallagher, Assemblyman Gallagher's father, grandfather, and also a former member of our Sutter County Board of Supervisors. But I also would like to close in memory of Art Bramwood, a retired Sutter County sheriff who recently passed away. I do have a little bit of information I'd like to pass on Art's bio. He was born in Miami, Florida in 1938, and he started his law enforcement career in 1960 when he joined Metro Dade Sheriff's Departments, Sheriff Department in '65 with his wife Cheryl. They moved to Oakland. He became an Oakland PD officer, held many positions there and various responsibilities. In 1980, they joined the Yuba City family, moved to Yuba City, and he joined the police department and later became a captain when he retired. In '89, he became Sutter County sheriff, retired from that position in 1998. And '05, he returned to Yuba City PD as the chaplain and retired from there in 2013. He has enjoyed life to the fullest, that's for sure. Also enjoyed duck hunting, spending time with his grandchildren and his beloved dogs, and I can relate to that one. So, you know, definitely, the presence everywhere he went contributed to our community, contributed to our family, contributed in so many different ways, as did Mr. Gallagher, without a doubt. I didn't have the privilege of knowing Mr. Gallagher, but again, no doubt that there was significant contribution there too. So, with that being said, and with deep respect for their families and their loved ones and their memory, we would like to adjourn this meeting. Thank you all very much.